Good evening and welcome to this, the February 9th meeting of the Livermore City Council. And this is Mardi Gras, les ailes de bonton pour les. Festive Mardi Gras to everybody here. Welcome to Fat Tuesday at the Livermore City Council chambers. So this is a continuation of the meeting from last night. So we've already done the Pudge Allegiance and we've already done the Citizens Forum and the consent calendar, so we're moving right into the main event, 6.02. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. Let's see, the roll shows that Councilmember Turner is not here. Oh, she's just perfect. All right. Okay, so we'll just keep, we'll start rolling. So with that, what I'll do is, are there any questions that the council has at this point? It looks like the city manager has a...
And we're ready for your staff, short staff presentation.
Okay, very good. Okay. Thank you Mayor Marchand and members of the council. Picking up on where we left off last night, we'll go over the schedule one more time and cover a couple of things. Steve, you want to get our PowerPoint up there?
Sure, Neil. There it is.
All right. Move one more. So following up on last night, continuing the meeting tonight, we will, the staff will provide a short summary of what was stated last night, at the beginning of last night's meeting, covering the, having a brief statement on the downtown specific plan, and then some of the, some of the items that were used to evaluate the applicants. Then the mayor will hold a public hearing, and then the council will deliberate, and then the council will engage in a discussion where they will select the finalists, identifying the most qualified applicants to deliver the project, selecting the top two hotel, residential and, residential retail and hotel proposals, and then provide direction to those top finalists regarding preferences and concepts. Then in the spring, probably April of 2000, of this year, the council will review the refined proposals from the preferred applicants and make the final selections. During the early summer months, staff will negotiate a purchase and sale agreement and then return to council, and council will review and provide authorization of the recommended purchase and sale agreement, and from that point on, we move forward with, with the entitlement process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, and Steve Stewart will provide a brief summary of the downtown specific plan.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So last night, we discussed how the community reached consensus and established the vision for land use and development in the city through the Livermore Vision Project, and also the general, comprehensive general plan update. The consensus was for the city to grow inward, near existing infrastructure and services, and not sprawl outwards, outside of its edges. There was also consensus that the downtown was in need of revitalization, and was determined appropriate and desired place for new development. The vision in the downtown specific plan implements the city's smart growth strategy to intensify development near public services, infrastructure, and transit. It emphasizes developing commercial, residential, and infrastructure projects to sustain the downtown's vibrancy over the long term. And we've seen some of those key commercial and infrastructure projects that are in the ground now and promoting revitalization and private investment. Residential development and the hotel project on the Livermore Village site and the Livermore Valley Center site are two key catalyst projects that, when finished, will provide additional consumers necessary to support existing and new commercial uses and sustain the downtown's viability over time. So staff evaluated the responses in accordance with the process and the criteria outlined in the RFPs, and also at previous council meetings that were also public meetings. Our evaluation emphasized the experience, financial resources, and readiness. Broken down a little bit further, we looked at project experience and capacity with the other aspects of those criteria listed on the screen, including similar projects, proximity of those projects in their home base, other team collaboration, and their references. We also looked at financial strength and, and experience, which again add access to financing, experience with those financial institutions, and the strength of those lenders, and also the developer equity and the structure of the deal. Last night, we, we heard presentations from the six finalists, and also the proposal put together by the ad hoc group. And, and actually, that concludes the staff background and presentation here. And we're available for any questions you might have before you move into the public hearing.
Okay, any questions for staff at this point? Last chance. Okay, and again, just what we're looking for tonight, we're looking for the, the top two or top three developers that we believe would have the greatest capacity, technical, managerial, and financial capacity to complete the project. We don't want somebody to get halfway through it and then go belly up. So we're looking for overarching themes, large themes of the, the project, but mostly we're looking for who's going to be the most capable to deliver the project, and then, as was pointed out, they're going to refine their proposals, come back, give us a refined and their best, their best plan, and that's when the decision will be made, probably in February, what this plan is ultimately going to look like. And this is based on the downtown specific plan, as was pointed out, that we've actually been working on for about the last, last 12 years. So with that, there's a lot of interest here, obviously. I've got about 50 cards, so we can get through this before breakfast tomorrow. What I'd like to do is to limit the comments to two minutes, and, and if somebody says what, what you believe, say, hey, you know what? I really like what that person said, and, and then we just move ahead. We don't need to repeat the same things over and over again. Again, I, this doesn't look like a real rowdy crowd, but one of the things that I do ask is that if, well, I don't know about you, but, one of the things that I do ask is, I like to be fair, I don't want anybody to be intimidated, so I don't allow booing. So if you don't like what somebody says, I ask that you please do not boo. In order to get fair time for everybody, that means if I don't allow booing, I don't allow applause and cheering, because that way, that also intimidates people. So if you agree with somebody says, just raise your hand. And, and the cool thing about that is, then the person is addressing the council, they don't see that the whole group disagrees with their saying, or vice versa. So that way, nobody feels intimidated, everybody feels comfortable speaking to the council. Okay? And with that, two minutes, I got 50 cards, so we'll see where we go. I'm going to announce several names ahead, so just pay attention, and when you anticipate that you're going to be coming up, you can get up and move up into the queue, and that way, it moves it more quickly. So I have Jessica Mauser, Splend, Splendorio, and John Pitts. And John Shirley has got your seat. Well donated.
Hi. Hi, everybody. I'm Jessica Mauser, and I am a third generation Livermore native.
Very good.
I went to Granada High, and my family's been here since the 40s. I'm also a commercial real estate broker, I'm a principal with Lean Associates Commercial Real Estate. I represent Livermore Valley Plaza, the Madden family, as well as a whole host of other deals and transactions that have happened the last five years, Sauced, Cream, Pachis, Prudential Real Estate, most recently Backyard Bayou. So I've got a pretty hands-on application of the downtown specific plan. I've also worked with a handful of the developers that were here last night and tonight. I have a few things that I can say and kind of add to the conversation. I'd like to say first off that all of the developers presented last night are capable and well-respected parties. I've seen all of their names before, and I think they'll all do a good job. It's just a matter of finding whose vision fits best with the city of Livermore, as well as the residents. I've seen the market both up and down. I've had to backfill space that sat for four years. It's a really hard thing to do. I've also now leased space in a great market, so I've seen the garment of what happens, and there's a couple thoughts on that particular subject. I think the retail should stay very simple. Having more than 5,000 to 10,000 square feet is really going to dominate the downtown. We can't absorb that type of space. Each group has presented a very similar retail footprint, and I think this is a very good thing. The consistency shows that they understand our city. We don't need more retail in other areas to grow out of what we have. We need to infill what we have and let that bring everything else around. By creating more retail over on L Street or elsewhere, I think we're manufacturing something that's just not ready yet. Second Street's changing, let that evolve. It's a lot more cost-effective for tenants to move into space that's existing and renovate versus building out from a cold shell and new construction. The costs are just unimaginable. So I think that we should let Second Street and let the other places be our expansion, and concentrate there, and not try and grow L Street or Railroad Avenue.
Great. Thank you very much. Splend, Splendorio, John Pitts, and Carol Pitts.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Splend, Splendorio, I'm here on behalf of the Innovation Tri-Valley and also the iGate incubator. All the finalists are excellent choices. And for something that I think is near and dear to a person who was on the board of iGate, you're talking to, you're providing housing for the 20s and the 30-year-olds that are the future of this community, and you're, this is exactly what the millennials need. They need smaller houses, close to services, and yes, what they want is beer, pizza, and Starbucks slash Pete's. So I really strongly urge you to take up one of these six and, and run with it for the good of the city, because all of them are strong financially. That is so important for a couple reasons. One, they have the capital, and also they have the ability to run through a market. We're going to have a downturn, but we want them to stay with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Splend. John Pitts, Carol Pitts, and Sheri Nigg.
Hi, I'm John Pitts. I live at 6200 Mines Road, and I'd just like to compliment the city, you people, and all the hundreds of people who have made a really viable downtown area for you. So we love it, and I think it's just great. In looking over the features today, I do have a question and a, and a, and a potential critique of what's going on. Back about 45 or 50 years ago, there was a very rapid change in the development of Livermore, and housing was being built, but not the amenities that are necessary for the housing, like parks and schools. And so a saving ordinance was passed, Save All Valley Environment. What that did is it said, if you're going to build residential, you have to build the things that the residents need, parks and schools. I see the residents downtown that are already up and built, and there are more that are coming here to this facility too. And my question is to you, where are the parks and schools going to be?
Thank you. Carol Pitts, Sheri Nigg, and Walter Davies.
Yes, I would just like to say that I really would look forward to having a hotel in our center of town, and I think this is, would be very important to our growth and our, our vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Nigg, Walter Davies, and Brendan Finley.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Nigg. I'm a property owner, business owner, current board member with the Livermore Downtown Association, and past president of the Downtown Association. And I want to thank you for your commitment to finishing the downtown, and also for your common sense, smart growth approach that you've taken. The hotel is the largest missing piece in the downtown, and we support a room count and the meeting space calculation that's recommended by the multiple hotel feasibility studies that have been produced. We do not support a project that would need community subsidy in order to survive. The downtown's success is due to sound investment based on intelligent business planning. We do not want to risk a vacant, underutilized project looming in the core of our vibrant downtown. Smart growth planning combined with smart business, market planning will ensure continued sustainable growth and vitality in downtown Livermore. And I'd like to also agree with what Jessica said regarding the retail space. She was right on point with that information. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Nigg. Walter Davies, Brendan Finley, and Milo Nordike.
I'm Walter Davies, 791 McLeod Street, in Livermore since 1959. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and city staff members. I wish to offer a broad overview of my own personal concepts, beginning with criteria. The development should be attractive, inviting, truly signature project with long-term viability. I think a fine hotel close by to a visitor multi-use center that can be used for events such as conferences, education, community and cultural events, with space for a museum, exhibit display, and art gallery. I think that this should include specially, specialty artisan, boutique, and retail, and all of this should be tied together with a winding path fronted by retail shops interspersed with mini-parks with benches, and perhaps water features. I urge no housing on this site. There are areas to the west and north that are better suited. If possible, I'm suggesting a parking structure should be underground and below grade. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Brendan Finley, Milo Nordike, and Jean King.
Good evening. I'm Brendan Finley, Chair of the Livermore Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you for having me today. Mayor, council, city staff, thank you for your hard work on this process. First, we want to thank you for the structure last night and the presentations. Also, keeping with the same questions gave us a good summary to look at everything clearly. So for the seven presenters and proposals, thank you for taking the time to come last night and present. We at the chamber were impressed with all the passion you did for the Livermore and driving the downtown. It really meant a lot to us. The Livermore Chamber is excited about our new development, and the three things that are important to us are community, economic growth, and sustainability. Community is a project that's going to drive the downtown Livermore plan that keeps the business community, residents, visitors, feeling the vibe that we've created here. The economic growth will be the project that will bring growth to local businesses, as well as themselves, and drive residents that will want to work and live in our unique town. A project that will be sustainable for our future, as well as all of us in Livermore. Livermore is about innovation, so we're not looking for today, but we're looking for Livermore of tomorrow. We feel the presenters had a unique story and had a plan that met with the envision of the RFPs. As we know right now, you have a tough decision to make. We feel, obviously live TV, we have three roses to give out. Lennar, we thought, gave a very good presentation, met all the full package of a hotel, retail, and resident planning, and would fit the model that we need for the downtown. They have a strong partnership as a company, and have a solid financial strategic plan to partner with the city. Our second was two groups that we felt could work well together, TruMark's and RSVP Hotel would be great good partners together to drive the vision and the plan. Both understood Livermore and both spoke strongly to what we as a community need and want for the downtown plan. Our last one was Summerland, Summerhill Project. We felt they had a solid resident and retail plan. We felt that the hotel plan has an honest, spoke honestly what the hotel needs, but we feel that they were good partners. We have great hotels here, but we knew that they could look at an iconic hotel, and we're open for discussions. We know you have a lot to vet with these seven. We want to make sure that each meet your requirements to the RFP. We have a community in mind, the financial standing to carry out the project. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Milo Nordike, Jean King, and Chris Chandler. Former Mayor Nordike.
Okay. I just would like to say that I think this is the most exciting thing we are doing for the development of Mountown, downtown Livermore, since the moving of 84 off of the freeway made it possible to do these kinds of things. I mean, I'm impressed by the number of responses you got. They look very good and very, and my priorities in thinking about this is, number one, we really want to get a hotel downtown, hotel and conference center, because it would really be significant for expanding Livermore's scientific and industrial industries. They could use such a facility to, for a variety of, of business purposes. And it would also be a great promotion for the wine industry to have a hotel, a major hotel downtown. My second priority is that we really need more restaurants, and we're going to have a lot more people. We're going to need a lot more restaurants and retail for the places that they can, they can shop. And if we are clearly going to have a larger population. The third priority would be that to limit the apartments on the site. I think the important thing is that, well, we've got a lot of new homes going in on East First Street that have all been built. We have homes north of 580, south of Los Mercedes College that are being built, and we've got the Growth Brothers, which is right across that L Street from this facility, which is planning on several hundred apartments being built there. I particularly like the TruMark layout with the parking garage in the middle. That was very, that's, I think, an excellent location for it. And they had two promenades with, which was a good idea, with trees and lawn and in the middle of the thing. I guess I'd just add at the end that in the Tru, in the TruMark layout, you could replace the hotel, I mean, the apartment in the southwest corner with a hotel, and, and then you have the hotel there on that side. Okay?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nordike. Jean King, Chris Chandler, and Lori Souza.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Last evening was very interesting, and many of the elements of RSVP, TruMark, and McCracken Reports were good. Livermore is a very special place, and the transformation in the last dozen years has been remarkable. Let's make sure that the development continues that transformation. Downtown should be an expression not of the developers, but of our community. It should include the arts and science and the wineries. Maybe RSVP was trying to just flatter us, but our downtown is special, and it rates a high-end, full-service destination hotel, because our downtown is first-class, high-end and full-service. We rate something better than a freeway motel. The hotel should also have rooms to accommodate conferences. A flexible use facility that can handle conferences and community arts, education, science, or winery-related events is needed also. Open space that can be an extension of the flexible space for walking, sitting, congregating, also sculptures, murals, and other art. Parking is an issue, but the world is changing, and we do not want to build for the 20th century and be out of step for the future. What we do not want is to have a huge central parking garage dominating this space. I shudder every time I go by the Dublin Bart parking garage. We don't want that here. When Livermore did the downtown plan in 2001, there were many workshops and meetings with the public, and a consultant was hired, Friedman, Tung, and Bottomly. I was a member of the general plan steering committee, as was John, and that worked very well. That was 15 years ago, Liver, and things have changed. I strongly support doing this again. Livermore was ahead of the field in rejecting suburban sprawl. We need an expert in city planning to guide us as to what the future will bring to this community. Thank you.
Chris Chandler, Lori Souza, and Tom Kinkanen.
Mayor Marchand, council, and staff, thank you first for your leadership, your efforts, and your energy in all that this has entailed. The Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association wants to get this right, right for the wineries, the residents, our downtown partners, and visitors. Getting right the creative aspects, as well as the financing, experience, and timing, are important versus getting it almost right. Narrowing down the applicants that proposed and can execute a combination of residential, retail, and a hotel is key. The city potentially stands to lose leverage in getting a hotel completed if it is not packaged as one project, or if one of the residential and commercial applicants, for example, perhaps TruMark, would agree to partner to ensure a completed project. Any project that requires subsidies from the city is not the right approach. Last night, we were presented with some fantastic visions, ideas, and renderings of what can be. The right project will embrace this creativity and innovative thinking and balance it with, to quote the staff memo, "experience, financial strength, and readiness to complete and deliver the project." Along with the rest of the community, we look forward to the continued dialogue to secure the right fit, not one that is almost right. As Mark Twain once said, "The difference between the right word and almost the right word is the difference between lightning and lightning bug." And so it is with this project in getting it right. Thank you.
One of my favorite quotes. Right up there with, "Never tried to teach a pig to sing. It wastes your time and annoys the pig." Okay, I will kind of set her off to the side here. In that case, Tom Kinkanen, David Marchand, and Jeff Caskey.
Good evening. In an effort not to be repetitive, I would urge the council to take the long view. Being a fourth-generation citizen of this valley, we've all seen trends change. We've seen locations that were once cursed locations that could never succeed become some of the most successful businesses in our downtown. Certainly residential living trends have changed. I share your passion to have a developer who is financially viable and capable of completing the project. At the same time, I think it's very obvious that people know how to make money building condos and apartments right now, and I would urge you to look at the amenities in the long term and see 20 years down the road, what, what would we have left on the table if we didn't consider each option very carefully, look for amenities like conference centers, open space, things that cannot be replaced once they're gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinkanen. David Marchand, Jeff Caskey, and Wanda Thompson.
Hello, my name is David. I'm currently an emergency department technician at Stanford Valley Care, but for the last five years, I was working downtown at the First Street Ale House. I was also living downtown. You want me to live here. Young people are economic engines. We work, we go to school, we're always on the go. We don't have time to make food, so we buy it on the run. For fun, we go out. 10 years ago, everyone was at home on their computers, being social, but now kids have smartphones, so we hang out together downtown on our computers. Most of my friends are working class. I spoke to the buddy who's on the Downtown Association, and he had a great point. He said, as a, as a business owner at a restaurant, where do you want your workers to go? The answer, nowhere. So they spend money at your place, at the local, at the local establishments. If you outsource the housing, young people will spend, will spend their money elsewhere where they live, in Brentwood, or Tracy, or as far as Oakland. I currently work with nurses who've had the same job for eight years, and they drive as far as Vallejo and Oakley because they can't afford to live here with their kids. Don't you want the people who work in your town to live here too? Don't they deserve that privilege? I personally contend that quality of life is the greatest indicator of happiness, which is why I refuse to live anywhere else. I get so much out of living here, though it is becoming increasingly difficult to afford. I encourage you to please support affordable housing in Livermore, so that people like me, working here, can play here, and hopefully one day, grow families here too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jeff Caskey, Wanda Thompson, and Gary Earl.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Caskey, 585 South K Street. Thank you very much for the opportunity. A couple of teams last night noted that they manage community input, but it did not appear that there had been an effort to collect that input. I personally want to thank the Ulfords team for reaching out and making a sincere effort to integrate that input into their plan. The residents of this city are the stakeholders of this project. Of course, the plan has to work financially and technically. It also needs to be an iconic core that will be the image and heart of Livermore for generations. Reaching out will be a little messy, but as, actually Rochelle Snyder was quoted in the Forbes article about Livermore, "It is a neighborhood that belongs to everyone." Most of the groups represented last night will be financially able to pull this out, pull this off. I encourage you to look at the vision that was put in front of you. Some developers had a few sentences and said, tell us what you want. An architect should ask- An architect should ask, "Tell us what you like. What are your values? How do you live, work, and play?" And then they would turn that into architecture in a project plan. I believe you saw some hopeful glimpses of that last night. Trumark came in with not just enthusiasm but ideas and a good sense of what Livermore likes about itself. Maybe a fresh market is or isn't the answer, but community engagement certainly is. The Ulfords' plan incorporated the unique character of this city and is a credible and buildable alternative. It includes park spaces, significant hotel, flexible-use conference center, live-work space, integrated retail, and opportunities for science and art experience. It doesn't insulate the new residents inside their internal spa or internal gym, but actually invites the outdoor residents, the rest of Livermore, into the parts of the community. We saw that also in some of the other plans, and I encourage you to look for those features. The Ulfords' plan was also a stretch goal, but our iconic downtown should be a stretch goal, and I look forward to seeing the council stretch for a really interesting downtown. I'll finish with a quote from Mark Roberts in that same Forbes article where he said, "The impossible is possible. It just takes a little longer."
Wanda Thompson, Gary Earl, and Don Meeker.
I'm short and sweet. My name is Wanda Thompson. I've been a Livermore resident, homeowner since 1986. And I also am a business owner. I do real estate and mortgages for the past 34 years. I've served on several boards, nonprofit boards here in Livermore, Little League. I've raised my boys here. They're all grown and stuff. And I'm actually for the hotel because I feel that we can go ahead and be vital for the Downtown Association, bringing for more businesses in for the wineries and science, and also for the art culture. And I want to know what happened to the North Livermore South Plan when we had the North Plan. I was all for that, and I just look at all the infill that's going on and everything and stuff. And I was so pushing for that when on past councils and past mayors and stuff, for our sports parks and everything like that, because I've been on Little League boards. I have a son that plays college baseball. And I'm just voicing my opinion based on what I've seen and what I've seen on all these builders in here. They're very well, you know, very well organized and stuff. I just want it to be a good plan for the city of Livermore. I want to stay here. I want to raise my kids to come back here to live, and I just want it to be a good plan. I want it to be sought out well. I don't like what's happened to Dublin, and I keep seeing it. I know they're having problems with their schools and stuff. And I just think it needs to be wisely planned out, safe. Thanks.
Thank you. I guarantee we all want a good plan. That's what we're working on. Gary Earl.
It's Orly, actually.
Sorry, I knew I was going to get it wrong, but, okay, Orly.
Well, you did.
Thank you. Yeah, some things are just constant, right?
Excuse me on that one.
Don Meeker and Paul Brown.
First of all, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm glad and overjoyed to see this development is going on, and I think any one of the developers would do a fine job. I am a little concerned about the need for a hotel in downtown Livermore, especially if it's on the small lot next to the Bankhead Theater. It just doesn't seem like enough room for a hotel, even a hotel like was proposed by RSVP. I didn't hear all the presentations or review all the proposed material, but I didn't see much discussion about solar and using all the rooftop space for solar generation. That's possibly something the city should make a requirement. And from the developers, I hope they're all here and listening so that if they are chosen, they can make a strong demand back to the city to clean up the area behind the buildings on North, on First Street, and also those businesses on the north side of Livermore Avenue. Charlotte's Web for one. I think there's a bar up there. I'd hate to come to Livermore looking for either a housing or a hotel and have to look out onto some of those backsides of buildings and those buildings which are on the north side of, I guess it's Railroad Avenue, not Livermore Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Orly. Don Meeker, Paul Brown, Clark Streeter.
Don Meeker, 2589 College Avenue. Well, good evening. I have an idea that I want to share with you all. A 500-square-foot space with seasonal rotating displays of art, science, and history can be designed as part of the cornerstone development by whoever wins the contract. It would face on Livermore Avenue. If that were expanded to a 2,000-square-foot space, then it would accommodate Smithsonian traveling exhibits. The City of Livermore Commission for the Arts and the Livermore Cultural Arts Council can arrange for the management of the space as well as coordinate design and selection of displays. An endowment can be established to support the sustainability of Livermore Art, Science, History Space, or LASH.
Thank you. Paul Brown, Clark Streeter, and Kathy Streeter.
I'm Paul Brown. I'm a Livermore resident for 48 years. You are to be commended on the great downtown that we have. We now have the opportunity to do something really special, to make it even better, so let's not miss the chance. I am very concerned with the number of new residences that the various RFPs are calling for. Adding hundreds of new residents will not only add to traffic congestion in the downtown area. What's more is that some of our excellent restaurants are already hard enough to get into on a given evening without adding more people into the mix. Therefore, new restaurants should be encouraged, along with the retail space that is being talked about. Also, nobody has suggested having office spaces in the new development. We have the potential for a lot of high-tech spinoffs in town from the labs. They should be coming here and not to Pleasanton. And new offices would provide jobs for new residents and keep them from becoming commuters on I-580. You could work on the second floor and go home in the evening to the third floor. As I drive around town, I see a lot of infill townhomes and apartments. I find the architectures of vastly varying attractiveness. The new townhomes near the Livermore Cyclopes are quite crowded and barren-looking, all the same height. My 10-year-old grandson likens them to driving through a tunnel. The design review process must prevent a repeat of something like that happening. One of the presenters last night spoke of having lower building elevations on the periphery of the new development. That's a great idea. If more residence must be built than the plan calls for, put them on the old Growth Brothers' property or on the other side of Railroad, as one of the council members suggested last July. Parking is a high priority to me. Any plan that fails to provide adequate free parking should be questioned, and that includes sufficient parking per residence and for any other facility that is being built. Suggestions to use valet parking or other transportation means may be okay for San Francisco, but they're not okay for Livermore at this time. That said, the Trumark RFP in conjunction with RSVP and the Leonard RFP have promising features, but they do need refinement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Clark Streeter, Kathy Streeter, and Millie Seibel.
Well, I was encouraged by the presentations last night, more so than I thought I was going to be. I was actually quite pleased, particularly with the flexibility shown with respect to retail space. I belong to a new group in town that advocates for the visual artists and visual arts. Our name is the Alliance for the Visual Arts, but our friends call us AVA. One of our goals, and we have numerous goals, is to establish an art gallery or an art display space downtown. It turns out there's many ways to do that, so we're not proposing any particular thing. And frankly, we don't know which one is going to work out finally the best. But I do know that if downtown Livermore has been filled with dense housing and there's no retail space, we'll be, we won't have very many options. So we're in favor of choosing a developer who can figure out how to accommodate a reasonable amount of retail space while also achieving their goals and our goals. I understand that after the selection of the finalists, there will be a period during which they will be, we will be able to make adjustments to the proposals in order to accommodate everyone's wishes. The visual arts, or what did I say? The visual arts, I hope that the visual arts will have a voice at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Streeter, Millie Seibel, and David McEgan.
Good evening. I was very pleased to be at home watching you all on television last night.
You're just bragging.
Yes, I am. And I was very surprised and pleased at the applicants. I think all of them listened to what the community said, and I thought that was great. I also was impressed with the questions from the council. I wasn't impressed with all the answers, but I was impressed with the questions. But one struck me really, and that was Trumark. And I will just make some comments about that one. I thought they were really well thought out, and they obviously listened carefully to the community. I loved their Market Retail Hall. It brings everything together without competing with our wonderful Bankhead Theater. It brings wineries, art, agriculture, and science. That's fabulous. They had good answers to the questions. They were prepared. I think all of the organizations are financially stable, so I'm not concerned with that. And I really liked their answer to the question about the hotel, when they said they'd like to see Livermore's vision of the Heelsburg Hotel. Perfect for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Millie Seibel, Dave McEgan, and Sally Dunlop.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members and staff. I'll make it easy. I agree with everything that Kathy said. It was really good. And we were sitting there laughing because Clark said he couldn't read his writing, and he was right. But I was here last night in the beginning of the meeting to support my friend and colleague, Brian O'Reilly, who talked about affordable housing for seniors. We're both members of the Interfaith Housing Board. And we, I would like to stress that there is a need for an affordable component in the development that is being built. And as Blaine mentioned earlier, young adults need housing in the downtown. This is a type of housing that is being proposed that would be perfect for young families and to bring some vibrancy into the downtown. You have all this retail space. You need to have bodies in the downtown to make it happen. I also just wanted to say that you have the urban growth boundary in place to push development in the downtown. The Trumark is really a, I was impressed. I kind of, I went home at, I got home at 8:00 and then stayed up till midnight to watch, three minutes to midnight to watch this, this proposals. And I just like Trumark because the garage is masked by housing. It's got wraparound housing. And I think it's an innovative plan. And just a little note, I had friends come down from out of state who used to live here, and I took her downtown to see all the things that were happening. And after we went into three shops, you know, there wasn't really a lot left to do. So we could go eat, and we could do that. But having the marketplace, I think, is just such an innovative idea and will take Livermore into the next few decades. So thank you.
After you eat, you can go drink. So that's two things you can do downtown. Taking a show at the Bankhead. David McEgan, Sally Dunlop, and William Dunlop.
Dave McEgan, I'm here. Some of these comments are going to be a little bit common, but I'll try to get through them as quick as I can. On the hotel, there seem to be some differences of opinion on who the real target market for this hotel might be. And I'm going to ask you, would it be the 100 or so CEOs that might be coming around? The thousands or so wine visitors who actually might be going to bed and breakfasts and napping instead? Or the tens of thousands of business visitors and wedding parties that will be coming in to Livermore every year? Personally, I think a hotel for those 10,000 is really what we need as a near term, particularly because a lot of them are going to be on a government per diem, and they're just not going to be able to afford a four-star hotel. For those looking for a spa, I hear the Purple Orchid's pretty nice. You might want to try that. As far as the residential commercials, I think the common element of the parking being inside the projects is the right attitude to get it off of the visual aspects of the thing. I do have some concerns on the overall capacity because I took some pictures of the Google Earth. I was going to hand them out, but you guys have seen it. Kind of did a rough count of the parking spaces in the two lots that are paved at least. And there's 350 to 400 is kind of what I'm guessing. But anybody who comes down here on the weekend kind of knows that that dirt area is already covered with cars as well. So my concern is that we're looking for some 550 spaces. Bringing down a lot new attractions to bring people into town, we're really not getting ahead of the power curve on the parking problem. Another concern that I had on the overall common things was the access to the businesses. Again, during the festivals like the Wine Country Festival, there's four or five semis that are parked out there serving the businesses to give them the food that they need to get through the weekend. If we don't have that parking for them, you're going to be out of food by 3:00 on Saturday, and that's not going to go very well. For all the vendors, I found them all pretty much acceptable. I think they all seem to meet the qualities. But I would say that the Ulford was a little bit drawn out, and they kind of be fleshing on the fly. The one other thing I'd like to quickly make a comment on is that your approach maybe limited the kind of projects that could be suggested by saying, "Hotel here, residence is here," when there really isn't a need to do that. And we saw the Ulfords kind of come up with some good suggestions. So going forward, combining those two into an overall project, I think, might be a very valuable way to get some additional ideas, like a market hanging off the Bankhead where, you know, like Pike's Place in Seattle, with the Wine Country Fair, it would really be something I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Dunlop, William Dunlop, and Barbara Steinfeld.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council and Staff. I'm very much against filling the entire 8.18 acres with high-density housing and retail. I have seen many areas in Livermore now under construction and feel that there are other places besides this particular area for housing. I would like to see an upscale hotel, and I promise not to use the word iconic, where my relatives can stay when they come to visit and where travelers can bring business to our city, and a conference center that can accommodate weddings and occasions, businesses, business conferences, and entertainment. One evening last summer, at Evenings on the Green, some of us were talking, and a councilperson, whose name will remain anonymous, thought it would be great to have a city center in Livermore for townsfolk to congregate and come together. These 8.18 acres are perfect and could be utilized so much as a sense of place for our citizens and for all kinds of exciting events. I know I have no expertise in redevelopment, but it seems like adding on to the existing parking garage would improve the downtown parking immensely. As for high-density housing, what about the vacant Isor Gross Brothers, Growth Brothers' property? I know the city doesn't own the property, but the used car lot portion of the property seems like it would be perfect for high-density housing since there's brownstones across the street and apartments to the west. Also, the old Growth Brothers showroom on First Street could be developed into more retail and extend the beautiful First Street down to the Fine Theater. We're getting more revenue from all the infilling and hope to experience more, like what I see every time I go down Vasco Road. And I think that the people of Livermore need a hotel and a conference center and some retail and a little housing. But let's leave a large portion for the city center, in the city center, for its citizens of Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you. William Dunlop, Barbara Steinfeld, and Lori Souza. She's back.
She's not back yet.
There she is. All right, welcome back.
I'm Bill Dunlop, and I live at 2675 St. Helena Court. And I was here last night to hear the presentation by the groups interested in designing the use of the downtown property. I took note that all the groups that proposed a hotel on the property adjacent to the Bankhead Theater discovered it was very constraining. Their designs had around 100 rooms, and the space was filled, making it difficult to include the spa that councilmen winter needs. The proposed hotels are too small to meet the desires of the laboratories, and the space is too constrained to allow flexibility in the overall amendments. Let me discuss, excuse me, let me discuss the Ulfords' proposal specifically. I found the architectural design by Mr. McCracken to be fantastic. It provided for some open space on the property west of Livermore Avenue that really intrigued me. I found the me. I found the concept beautiful and would love to visit a space like that in our downtown. The approach of placing a hotel on the larger section of land allowed the hotel to have significantly more rooms than those that were proposed by others. A hotel of a larger size would be far better to meet the needs of the laboratories. On the issue of parking, although it is part of all the proposals that were presented, it is a common problem for everyone. I did not find the idea of large parking lots filling the interior of the housing and shopping areas very attractive. Although this, groups that took this approach were trying to provide something iconic for the city, that approach really left very little room for open space. And although it is more expensive, I think the proposed proposal to provide some of the parking underground allowed for more open space to be incorporated into the design by Mr. McCracken. And with that, I will close, and thank you very much.
Dave, Mr. Dunlop. Perfect timing. Barbara Steinfeld, Lori Souza, and Dale Kay.
I'm Barbara Steinfeld with Visit Tri-Valley, and I want to thank you very much for your work on this, and it's super exciting to see this happening at this time. I cannot wait to see this develop. My only point that I want to make and reiterate is, please think about incorporating the largest hotel possible that you can, if it means moving it to across the street or whatever it needs to be done. Whichever developer can take that, work together with another one, put it together, come up with the largest amount of rooms possible. That will give us the biggest impact in the long run for Livermore and the Tri-Valley. Thank you.
Lori Souza, Dale Kay, and Gail Travers.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff, and all our esteemed guests. I just wanted to add a few comments. I've been following this a little bit in the media, and, and first, I'd like to thank the City Council for naming the month of February as Science and Engineering Month. It's actually very important to me as a community member. And I wanted to say that I'm kind of intrigued with some of these ideas that are coming forward about creating some themes downtown that are arts and science together. I think that can be really exciting, and I think that could really set us apart from some other communities, and that could be a real drawcard for us. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Dale Kay, Gail Travers, and Martha Espinoza.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I have to say, I stayed here until about 12:30 last night, and I left, I was not even tired. I know that sounds strange, but I was so excited about what we heard, and I think last night was truly a tribute to this council, to the city staff, and to the city of Livermore. Because hearing these lovely insightful comments from these developers about what makes up the fabric of this city, and then simultaneously having them identify this city's potential and vision, demonstrated that this city's process of finding a developer for this property was a smart and very fair one. As a business organization with about 800 members, we can articulate, I think, with a pretty broad scope of knowledge, what we see as important, what our businesses see as important. And, and that was identified by many of the presentations last night. What we want, of course, is what all of us want probably is that, something that reflects the beauty and uniqueness of this area. Because the downtown is truly the front door of our community. Housing is the number-one identified problem for businesses in this area. It is essential to build housing for our young workers. I don't know if David's still here, but he spoke to that. The next generation needs a place to live, too. And their businesses need them. They are having problems recruiting. They are having problems retention, with retention. We cannot just look at our future. We need to look at their future. And their future should be, they deserve to live here as well. We also feel with that hotel, it, it needs to speak to, we're not going to talk about how many stars it has, but it needs to speak to a destination hotel if possible, and it has the kind of amenities that, you know, a tourist would want to have and that executives would like to go to. We only say, executives, this is what our business asks for. I'm going to say one more thing. This development is key to the city. It needs to pencil out, though. It needs to be financially feasible, but that pencil can draw and execute a very lovely picture. I know you can do it.
Great, thank you. Gail Travers, Martha Espinoza, and Steve Larenaga.
Good evening. After listening to last night's presentation, I'd like to ask our City Council what criteria you'll be using to evaluate the applicant's proposals and to select the two finalists. I know you went into that a little bit, but I have some questions. I trust you want to do what's best for Livermore, and that you genuinely intend to represent the wishes of the majority of its residents as best you can. And I believe you are doing your best to protect Livermore's citizens from financial risk. The questions council members asked of each applicant last night were clearly aimed at determining the best candidate in all of the important areas. It's also clear, all seven applicants have given this project a great deal of consideration. It would seem they all have the experience and financial credentials necessary to see the project through to its successful conclusion. But to whom can we entrust our vision of Livermore's future? Can it be purely a business cost-benefit decision? When you asked for proposals that included an iconic hotel, what were you expecting to see? Merriam-Webster defines iconic as something widely known and acknowledged, especially for distinctive excellence. Which of the applicants we've heard from so far has the best chance of providing Livermore with a town center that demonstrates distinctive excellence? In the past, I've shared concern about the pace and nature of development in Livermore, and I've been reminded that a significant portion of Livermore residents voted to establish an urban growth boundary to protect our hills, and that by their doing so, we were all bound to an agreement to develop through infill within that urban boundary. However, in the effort to protect our natural resources, I don't believe anyone thought they were agreeing to relinquish control over the pace of that development or its character. As you consider these seven applicants and work towards selection of the final candidates, please keep in mind that it's possible to both accommodate reasonable growth and maintain our city's character. In the end, it's about more than the style of the townhomes and retail centers. It's about the balance of new residences with the amenities available to serve those residents in all of Livermore. It's about growth that promotes Livermore as the unique community it has always been and deserves to continue to be. Thank you.
Martha Espinoza, Steve Larenaga, and Dave, excuse me, Doug from Unique Environments.
Good evening, council members and Mayor. I'm Martha Espinoza. I am representing the Livermore Chamber of Commerce. I have worked there for 19 years, and I, in those 19 years, I have hoped to live in Livermore. Therefore, I cannot say I'm a resident of the Livermore area, and probably will never be a resident of the Livermore area because of how expensive it is. But I'm okay with that. I traveled 30 miles each way and love to come here. But one of the things that bothers me is that my daughter, who just recently graduated from college, worked in the summer, hoped to live here, and because of the lack of choices in housing and the housing prices for the workforce, she will probably never work, work or live here, and chose to stay in Southern California. So these projects, I have seen many in the 19 years I've been at the chamber. I have seen many proposals for hotels, and still to this day have not seen one come up. So keep that in mind, but keep our youth in mind. Keep it, I, I know everyone's concerned about changing what this community looks like, but we also have to keep in mind that we're not going to be here forever. Our kids are coming up, and we need to think about them. A lot of people think, we're here, close the doors, don't let them in, and, and we're okay, and that's not the case. We hear it on a daily basis with people that are moving here from other areas. They love to work here. Once they see the prices of housing, they turn around and leave. We're losing a lot of talent. And starting with my personal one, I would love to have my daughter in the Bay Area, but unfortunately, that won't happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Larenaga, Doug from Unique Environments, and Scott Kennison.
Hi, I'm Steve Larenaga. I am a manager for a credit, a local credit union in the downtown area, as well as vice-chair for the Livermore Chamber of Commerce. Mayor, City Council and staff, thank you so much for your time and opportunity on this. I'm personally excited about the growth of here, here in Livermore. I'd like to express my appreciation that we are looking forward to having the mixed use in this downtown area. I have staff that personally cannot even, they have to travel to come in to work here. And I have one that travels an hour to just get here every morning and goes back. So I'd like to find housing that's closer for them, because they've always mentioned, we just can't afford to live in this area. Also, another thing is I have customers that come in that are always complaining about parking. So as you do your consideration, find stuff that is adequate parking. That is so important to the area. Many of the RFPs that were presented last night, thank you for their time on that. And I'd also like to support what Brandon said earlier, representing the Livermore Chamber of Commerce. Just kind of short on the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, Scott Kennison, and Jean Schuler.
Hi, I'm Doug. This year, I've been here for 40 years. And my kids, my grandkids are here. I love living here. When I first saw this, I was moved to song, and I won't sing, by Joni Mitchell. But basically, it was kind of like, they paid, what was it? Oh, yeah. They paid paradise and put up a parking lot. And the concern I have is not what you're doing and what you're trying to accomplish, but where you're doing it. And what I don't see is enough open space in the middle of this, where people can actually congregate. You know, it's wonderful if you go down there now, and you see everybody strolling around. And it's even tough, because there's a lot of people, which means it's obviously vibrant to begin with. But there's no place for people to sort of meet, meet friends, get friends, and things of that nature. If we had an open area in the center, more like a plaza, you guys did a great job on the Bankhead area. You know, so when you're at the Last Word or Paxis and so on, it's a great place to eat. If you had a plaza behind all of the guys who have opened up restaurants, and all these families who have already devoted their lives to creating a space for us to go to, whether it's restaurants or merchants and so on, allow them to turn their buildings around and get more access where they can have more people eating outside. A lot like what you see in Italy or anywhere in Europe. I mean, it's worked for 1,000 years. So anyway, I think that's, it might be a great alternative. The other part is, I understand what you're trying to accomplish. It's wonderful, all the vetting that you've done, but I just think that there should be more for all of residents, I think, what, 80, 85,000 of us, and something to draw us down there. It's also a perfect place for art and to hang out. Anyway, it's a great town. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Kennison, Jean Schuler, Nancy Bankhead.
Hi, I'm Scott Kennison. Thank you for letting me speak, City Council, staff.
We can't stop the Andrew General.
Well, I won't sing for you. I could try. No, no. First, I want to thank you, I mean, thank you for all the work that you've done, but also thank all the developers who presented last night. I, along with a lot of other people in this room, were very impressed with what, what was presented to us. And I think, as everyone has said, they're all capable of doing it, doing the work. I was particularly struck by TruMark and their presentation, because I think that they had a real sense of the vision of the city and had a vision for the space that was very compelling to me. I particularly loved the marketplace idea, having an open space like that for farmers' markets, for art markets, for the Wine Festival, for all those things would be a terrific benefit to downtown. I will mention one of the other, the, one of the other developers, Tim Lewis had mentioned, was the only one who mentioned shared, shared car services. The idea, it's something that is, I'm very passionate about. I come from an urban area, but I think it would benefit Livermore as well. It also would alleviate some of the parking problems. People talk about parking all the time. And I think that the people that we're trying to, to come to downtown Livermore are interested in being in downtown Livermore because it's a walkable place. And Mayor Marchand has often said that young people don't want to mow lawn, they don't want to have a yard. They also don't want to have a car, more and more. They don't, you know, they don't want to own a car. They want to be able to go on their iPhone and book a car and walk up to it and it be open, and it's all done, and they drive and do what they need, and then they come back and they park it. They also like to ride their bikes. I mean, there are all those things. So a walkable, bikeable community, I think it's great. Another thing that has been mentioned is the, I think all the developers should be open to change the idea of not viewing South Livermore as a divider, and one thing has to be on one side and the other thing has to be on the other. And I hope whoever the developer that is selected will sincerely listen to the community and their input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Schuler. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I was here all, last night for the whole five hours, and I was really impressed by the creativity of the applicants, especially the idea of the farmers' market, the education and the cultural arts center, and the hotel, and the conference center. I'm a 48-year resident of Livermore, and I've worked at Livermore Lab for 44 of those 48 years. And I want to express my desire for a need for a conference center and a, and a hotel downtown. As an example, defense ministers and other senior delegates from 37 countries, including Iran and Pakistan, along with representatives from the International Atomic Energy Agency, Interpol, and the European Union, visited the United Nations, gathered at the lab last week for a two-day conference, and to discuss effective responses to the nuclear threat involving terrorists. It was called the Apex Gold Conference, and they were gathering to identify potential national, international actions in the event of a nuclear crisis. So where did these people stay? They didn't stay anywhere in Livermore. They didn't get an opportunity to see, to go to the wonderful restaurants to see our downtown. So I think we have an opportunity now to showcase Livermore to international visitors. These conferences are still going to happen. It would be great to have them be able to stay downtown and not be pocketed around in Dublin and San Ramon and Pleasanton and Tracy, and, and not be able to see our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Bankhead, Liz Roberts, and Krista Burke.
Hello, Nancy Bankhead. I think everybody knows I want the best for the Bankhead. No question.
Why?
Yeah. We need a hotel that is going to be able to have a place for the artists to come to town and just be able to walk over to the theater. It needs to be a large theater, I mean, a large hotel, 150 or whatever we can get. When I was a small child, we went to San Francisco, and I remember them signing petitions because they didn't want the Pyramid Building built in San Francisco. It was going to wreck San Francisco. I actually got to go in there when it was first open, and they gave you a paper doll of the bank, and I still have it. It is, I mean, you think of San Francisco, you think of the Pyramid Building. We need something that will draw people from the mall and draw them downtown. We have a light bulb. Can we have something like a grape bottle, a cowboy, a huge cowboy? We don't want people thinking of Livermore as they did in my life. Oh, Livermore, it's too hot, I don't want to go there. You know, let's go look at the large wine bottle. It's in Livermore. Let's have something iconic that will draw people to our downtown, a hotel, but make it look unique like us. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Roberts, Krista Burke, and Rochelle Snitcore.
Good evening. This is, I'm almost just tall enough for this. Good evening, Mayor Marchand and City Council members and staff. My name is Liz Roberts, and I'm co-owner and jazz director of Livermore School of Dance. I'm also the current board president of the Livermore Downtown Association Board of Directors. We are very excited about the continued advancement into our pride and joy, downtown Livermore. I opened my dance studio in downtown Livermore because of the city's commitment to its health and vitality. I see it building momentum, and we cannot afford to stop that momentum. I live the arts and my students and this community, with my students and this community. You provided and sustain the amenities we need. Stick to the Downtown Pacific Plan, it's really working. Thank you so much for everything. We're so excited about this.
Thank you. Krista Burke, Rochelle Snitcore, and Sherry Souza.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Krista Burke, and I am a member of the Livermore Downtown Inc. Board, and I'm a past president. The growth of Livermore has established itself as smart growth, no sprawl, smart growth community. The, the South Livermore Plan and urban growth boundary were achieved due to the commitment and the plan of infill housing. The downtown commercial district is the perfect neighborhood for density and increased residential. Residents are an important piece of the balanced walkable community. More rooftops translate into more consumers getting us to the seven-day week consumer More rooftops translate into more consumers getting us to the seven-day-a-week consumer presence. This builds sustenance and businesses and talented hospitality staff in place, and will take, and will attract new retail and restaurant investment. We need more commercial, shopping, and dining development, and we are excited to invite new opportunities into our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Rochelle Snitcore, Sherri Souza, and Bob Carling.
So Mayor Marchand, City Council members, these are the nights I live and breathe for. We are moving forward, I'm just very excited that we're at this point now, and looking so forward to the future of that. Downtown districts and unique, their unique lifestyle. We need to be listening to Thirty-Somethings, I think the gentleman left, but it's, he is the prototype of what it is we should be really thinking about. We pride ourselves in Livermore on being a very highly educated community. And so I would encourage everybody to take the time to become educated. What does that mean? When we're going to be all giving input as this process goes forward, I'm going to put some words out there that I want everyone to Google. If you don't Google, you can look it up at the library. Go old school. But look up walkable communities. Go to the National Historic Trust for Historic Preservation's Main Street Center, and look at what they're saying about downtowns, and what vitality translates into. Look up the word millennial. What is a millennial? They're not just scary, and look funny, and like coffee. They are brilliant. They are a reflection of who's raised them. And so many of us are so proud of what we have raised, that it is unfortunate that we're not, we're not respecting them enough to want to make sure that they're able to live here. I want to continue bragging about the high education level of our community. I'm scared that we're, we're going to be losing that, because they aren't able to live here, they're going elsewhere. And I had a joke with that one, but it was, it probably would be inappropriate to some, so I'm not going to say it. TruMark, in our mind, we've had our little huddle today with the board members, TruMark nailed it on what the vision is. I feel like they were speaking our language. I think they have looked up those words that I just mentioned. They have Googled them. And they're living that, and we felt really good about it. Disappointed that they didn't come in with a hotel partner, that does concern us. We want to make sure the package is in tandem, and partnered, and going to happen, and go forward. We don't want to lose that. RSVP did impress us, and Somerville, except I don't want a residence in, and Lamar had the full package. So you guys have a big job ahead of you. You had great, great things to look forward to.
Thank you. Sherri Souza, Bob Carling, and Ken Ball.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Council members, and City Staff. I am a Livermore Realtor, and have been for 14 years. I'm a resident of Livermore, I've been here for 25 years. And I am a member of the Livermore Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I want to reiterate the chamber position. I think that Brendan Finley made a good statement. We have some good viable choices. I think Lennar is a good choice for their well-rounded approach. I think that TruMark and RSVP would make a wonderful partnership. And I think that Summer Hill Homes also has a good plan. The need for workforce housing is immediate in our area. And being a Realtor, I drive people over the hill every day. And not only millennials, I'm driving Gen Xers. Those are the 40, 35 to 45, 47-year-olds. I'm driving them over the hill every day, because they cannot afford housing in the area. I'm privileged as a Realtor to live and work in the same community. It is, it's a privilege. And it adds so much to the quality of my life, being able to live and work in the same city. I look at these people, they're driving from the valley over to Sunnyvale, Cupertino, on a daily basis. It adds so much stress to their lives. We really need housing. I want to advocate for those apartments that we're building. We haven't built apartment buildings in 25 years here in Livermore. We need to get some affordable housing here, so that our kids, and even, you know, their kids, will be able to live and work here. It's crucial, and it's crucial for the employment that we're, that we're creating in the, in the community as well. I'm impressed with the proposals, and I'm excited about moving forward with this much-needed addition to our downtown. I'm in favor of financially feasible and solvent choices for the council, and a professional approach to providing the needs for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Carling, Ken Ball, Derek Eddy.
Good evening. I'm Bob Carling, retired director from Sandia National Labs, and I'm here to read a letter from Bill Goldstein from Lawrence Livermore, as another example of the close collaboration between Sandia and Lawrence. Lawrence Livermore National Lab applies forefront science and technology to solve the nation's most pressing problems in national security. To this end, we rely on attracting and retaining a world-class workforce, and the ability to reach out to and convene scientists and engineers from around the world. Having the Tri-Valley region as our home, and being able to offer exceptional amenities are key ingredients in our success. It is for this reason that we have been pleased to observe the thoughtful and measured development of the downtown Livermore area. In the past, we have advocated proposals for the development of a hotel and conference center in Livermore, and reiterate that support here. The addition of such a center would enhance our ability to host visitors and events, and subject to considerations of cost and scale, we would be open to discussing the establishment of a laboratory presence there, that could enhance our ability to educate the community about our exciting work and contributions to the nation. Respectfully, William H. Goldstein, Director of Lawrence Livermore National Lab. And let me just add on a personal note, that I've lived in Livermore for nearly 40 years, and I think you guys have done a great job in attracting some really top-notch proposals, both for hotel and residences, and I look forward to seeing what the outcome of your deliberations are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to recognize, Mr. Carling and I tore our house apart not too long ago, and actually he went back into it and refurbished it, so that a veteran could move back in there with his family. So that was through the number of Sandia volunteers, so thank you for that. Ken Ball, Derek Eddy, and Denise Liddon.
Hello, my name is Ken Ball, and I live in Livermore. And I would like to thank you for the chance to share for all of us our visions for the downtown superblock area. I think that the hotel and conference center would be a great asset for the community. And I also see the need for housing within walking distance of the downtown, just not in the superblock area. Please limit the number of condos and apartments on this site. They provide little benefit to the community as a whole, and no benefit to hotel and conference visitors. Also, how much will they cost to rent or buy? If it is current market rates, most young workers whom we're talking about need places to live, most of them wouldn't be able to afford them. So I think that it should be addressed upfront, whether or not these are going to be something that the people that work in downtown Livermore could even afford. The community needs entertainment, education, information, and innovation. I believe the superblock could be a super magnet, and too much housing on the site would dilute that. A super magnet would also draw developers that would develop other properties on their own. I would also hope that there would be some open space, such as a plaza, that would be included, that would benefit the community as a whole, as a meeting place and a place to congregate. Many of us dream of something more than housing. If your dream is Earth Orbit, you'll never get to the moon. So please think of the entire community when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Derek Eddy, Denise Liddon, Yolanda Finchenko.
Mayor Marchand, City Council, thank you. My name's Derek Eddy, proprietor at Purple Orchid Wine Country Resort and Spa. You're always welcome, Mr. Warner. And thank you, David, for giving a shout-out to our small, little boutique resorts. We love being here in Livermore.
You did say "and spa," correct?
And spa, yes. I'm also currently on the Livermore Downtown Board, which is a great pleasure for myself. So the downtown specific plan works. Don't slow down now. Economy supports now. Over the last 15 years, over 100 businesses have invested their livelihood into downtown, because we have a solid, well-thought-out plan. It was a promise for the future. Please continue that commitment. The design guidelines for the downtown development clearly define commitment to our existing historical architectural treasure that we have. We urge that adherence to these guidelines be demanded of the chosen developer, as they will bring a new iconic pride space to the mix that continues to reflect our history and the story of Livermore downtown. As a hotelier, you know, we don't want travelers to go to Napa Valley for their weekend stays. And it seems like it might be a conflict in our interest, but I, we see it as an opposite. The more travelers that come here, the more likelihood they're going to want to stay at our resort. So we support a boutique-style hotel. The amount of rooms and things like that, I think need to be determined, but as a hotelier here in the market, especially one that really depends on, you know, weekend travelers as well as weekday travelers, we really feel, as a hotel, one of the missing links here is boutique-style accommodation. So we really look forward to competition, and that competition, I think, will raise the standard that we have here in Tri-Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Liddon, Yolanda Finchenko, and Lynn Sepala.
Denise is not in the organization, please.
Okay, she had to go to work, huh? Okay. Let's go with Yolanda Finchenko, Lynn Sepala, and Drew Felker.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Marchand, and the Council for the opportunity to address you. I'm an 18-year Livermore resident, I'm one of the Gen Xers that was referred to earlier. I'm proud to have been able to own a home here. I've worked at Sandia. I've worked in a small business in Livermore, and now I own my own business. I now work at Igate, and I see the development of the downtown for mixed-use residential, commercial, and hotel is critical to the success of my business, and also to some of the dreams and aspirations that I have for my children. The need for having retail space that is going to be used by both downtown residents and also hotel guests can only support the day-to-day life for myself in a small business, and also, as I grow, the ability for me to attract and retain employees. So I would just like to express, express my support for the project, and for the designs to include retail space that can support not only residents and hotel guests, but also downtown business needs, such as bars, smaller meeting spaces, places to eat during the day that are affordable, kind of jazzy, stylish, and also healthy. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Lynn Sepala, Drew Felker, Mary Ann Rocha.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lynn Sepala, I'm President of the Livermore Cultural Arts Council. In the January 6 meeting, the Council unanimously voted to support this following statement. LCAC supports an iconic and creative downtown development that supports the needs of the Livermore arts and cultural community. I hope that you will continue to engage the cultural and arts community, as you refine a project that will define downtown Livermore for decades to come. It takes time to do this. This process is proceeding at a very rapid pace, especially when one looks back at how the downtown came to, into existence. Many meetings over many months involving many people help to get what we have today. I hope you will continue this process. Please emphasize quality over speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Felker, Mary Ann Rocha, and Sandra Graffith.
Hello, my name is Drew Felker. I am a, one of four brothers born and raised here in Livermore. Three of us have come back to live here. The biggest problem facing those of us in our 20s, I'm a business owner, two of my brothers work out the National Lab, is that we don't have any place to live. Most of my friends have moved over to San Ramon, even if they work here in Livermore, because there is no housing. San Ramon, Dublin, and Pleasanton all have available units for us to live in, but there are no apartments or condos here for us in Livermore that we can find. I support the maximum number of apartments, because we will move in, and we're excited to move in, and I'll honestly be the first in line. I also support the hidden parking structure. I don't know if any of you have ever visited Santa Barbara, but downtown Santa Barbara does a really good job of strategically placing parking units hidden behind buildings, commercial residential combos. And it looks amazing. It's walkable, it's wonderful. And Livermore has the ability to become more like a city like Santa Barbara with, you know, a straight mile of retail and restaurants. We are the new wine country, and with a hotel, and with more downtown walkable space tactfully placed, along with more apartments and condos, it will really enable those of us to move back home that haven't been able to. Thank you.
Thanks, Drew Felker. Mary Ann Rocha, Sandra Graffith, and, oh my God. We'll get back to, get to that in a minute.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor Marchand, Council, and staff. I'm so sorry I missed last night's presentation, but I had another commitment and couldn't be here, but I wanted to have a chance to speak tonight. I've been a citizen of Livermore since the 1960s, in fact, this is my 50th year here. And it's grown into a lovely and vibrant city. And we have some beautiful dirt downtown. It really is. You know, dirt can be very scarce, and it's very beautiful, and we need to do something very special with it. And I really am promoting having a lovely hotel, a conference facility, open space with park-like amenities, and also retail mix. I think that residential should not be in this core downtown. Even though I'm a Realtor, and I love to sell properties, I think there are other places that we can put housing for people that would be very affordable. I'm looking at the new Sage Development out in the Montage area, out by the 580, and that's a beautiful development. I think we need more of that, out by the 580, which Bart would be happy to see, to have more transit villages that they like. So I'm just going to encourage that we stay with a project that will be beneficial to our residents, as well as our visitors, for generations to come. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Sandra Graffith, it looks like B-A-R-R-A?
Graffith.
Pardon?
Graff, ra.
Yes. No, no, Graff, Sandra Graffith. No, this is B-A-R-R.
Berontis.
Berontis, okay. Berontis, okay. Very good. I wasn't sure those were K's or R's. Now I should talk about handwriting. Yes, Sandra.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Thank you for this opportunity. I was here also till midnight last night, and I'm very thankful I stayed. It was well worth my time. I was proud of the Council and the staff, and how they handled the proposals, and I was proud of all the proposals, too. I think they all did a great job. My orientation comes from 38 years working for Hilton Hotels Corporation. I worked in properties up and down the West Coast, and a flagship, pardon?
Got connections there?
A few, still. But my, my orientation is the hotel and serving the public. Having adequate conference space to serve the people that come to Livermore, having an adequate hotel, the proper hotel, to serve the clientele and the demographics of the area, I think would anchor this, this whole project for us. The arts as well is very important. I have a list of several different suggestions. If it would be okay to submit to you, I'd like to do that.
Can you hand those to the city clerk when you're done?
Some of them are duplicates of what have been said here before, but having a good hotel, on, on some of the plans, I didn't look at them as closely as others, but I don't think they took advantage of the fact that if they were going to go up high, that they would do something with that height, like have a glass elevator so people can look out, have a rooftop restaurant, or, or have your residents with a corner apartment that looks out onto the, the city lights and the intersections and so forth, I think would also be a good use of, of the space. I'd also like to bring up one last suggestion. We're all here because we love Livermore, and, and that's, that's We're all here because we love Livermore, and that's taken for sure, and this is going to be a special, special project for a special, special town, and when it's done, we want to all be here twenty years from now, getting kudos for what we decided on. I would like the council to consider that we have a couple of community liaisons to work with the developers and the city directly, to keep the information and the opinions flowing and keep us a cohesive group so that we don't separate, and then we don't know what's happening on either the developer side or the city side, and that those liaisons could work back and forth to keep the purpose on track and to make sure that everything that we want for this development comes to fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Beronte. Beronte, Anne Brown, and Nick Liang.
Dear mayor, so me and my family, we moved from Palo Alto in 1999, and innocently we afford a home, a three-bedroom home. My children grew up as homeschoolers, and so grew up, they grew up learning biology in the backyard, but it's strange enough, there's like vines growing all over the place. I didn't plant them, so they learned about growth. And then I started thinking, wow, so what kind of grapes are these? These are Tepernillo, because, you know, I compare them. I made, you know, a little wine out of them. So, what I'm trying to say is that the roots in this valley is history that we are allowing to go by, and it's implanted everywhere. And we have producers here, producers that can expose their products, or not, because of the real estate prices or rents, high prices to rent. How about having an expo center, a Livermore Expo Center called Seasons Expo Center all across the year? Now, if you have an expo center, you can have all these producers exposing, and instead of charging them rent, they pay a ten percent of the gain to the city. Or you can put taxes and more taxes or rents, they won't do it. What I'm trying to say also is that Livermore is a place where innovation in education is fantastic. The LCP, the charter school where my kids went, hey, they showing the market, where can, they can develop their ideas, and they showing the market where the tools that are going to learn are going to be used. So, they showing the future.
Let's see if you can finish that. No, you can finish that. Finish your thought.
Can I finish?
Finish your thought.
So, in this expo center, we can invite cuisine from all over the world, you know, let them be seasonally, you know, all over across the board. And on the housing, I have no word to say that. I don't know. But I was innocently enough, being able to afford a home here that in Palo Alto would cost $750,000 in 1999. Here, I won't tell the price because you will throw rocks at me, and, you know, I had enough of that.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Anne Brown, Nick Liang, Craig Bueno.
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to address the staff and council. I am relatively new here, unlike many of you. I've been here three years as an educator and community activist and a lover of the arts. So, I'd like to speak to the potential of this project that I think many of the proposals last night grazed upon, and I'd like, hopefully, that you would look closely for these features. I would love to see this project as a model for sustainable building that can serve as an example for our youth on how we are coming up with solutions to reduce our footprint on the earth. And because we're in a really innovative area, I see no reason why we couldn't have a LEED-certified-type building, and I would hope that that would be a consideration as reducing the amount of waste, using renewable energy as an example to the community of how this could be incorporated into a project like this. I'd also like to encourage that the plazas, the public open spaces, and hopefully a community meeting room would include educational features. It's been mentioned perhaps bringing in some science from the lab, that would be so exciting. Having places where art can be displayed, I think, is a big need in our town, and performance space that could be flexible used for our student performers would be a wonderful asset in this project. So, thank you for your time, and I encourage you to have fortitude for this amazing decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Liang, Craig Bueno, and finally, the last speaker is Brooke Witherspoon.
Good evening, dear mayor and council. I'm a downtown business owner. I'm very excited to see that we are being cautious about what we're building for our future and take time to explore different ideas and proposals. But again, I'll be very short. All I'm saying is that this is a very grand spot, and it needs to be put in with something very special, something grand, and something, to my opinion, that will dominate the scene for the next thirty to forty years, if not fifty. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Craig Bueno and Brooke Witherspoon.
Good evening, mayor and council, staff. You guys did a great job last night, and my name's Craig Bueno, and my wife and I, we've been here homeowners about thirty-one years. I've eaten at every single restaurant in this town. I love this town. I mean, we endured the tire shops and, you know, all that, and everyone said this downtown wouldn't work. We were part of the people that supported that, you know, just on the peripheral, and it's been, it's a great plan. I see my friends from Danville and Pleasanton sneaking over. You know, let's be honest, this is a great town. I don't think there's a need to make it vibrant. If you hired an architect to do an artist's rendering, there's not as many people in the artist's rendering as Livermore has, and it's downtown. We've done a great job here. Our three sons, all raised, all out of college, all plan to live here. One of them just recently purchased a house. I would caution against the high-density housing within this core. It's something we need to have that's special here. I came, I've spent my whole career working in a city that did something very similar, affordable, high-density housing within the downtown core, and five years from now, we'll be back here, and how we use our downtown is going to be dictated by the people that we put into the downtown under that model on it. It becomes a problem. They complain about the noise, the people outside of their homes, and then it starts restricting what we all have come here to enjoy. I believe that we need the housing. We need high-density, high-density and affordable housing, but perimetering your downtown as opposed to putting it directly in the core, if that's an option and it's doable, would be nice. We talk about, we need parking. I, too, I come by and I do cringe when I walk, drive by the Dublin, whatever that thing is, the Mount parking out there. It's horrible. They tried to dress it up afterwards and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's a mess, and if, there's a lot of high-density housing around there. There's also a lot of problems, and if you, I would just encourage that we, if we do something maybe with public space, sub-traning parking akin to Union Square, public meeting space, open park on top. The problem with putting kids in the houses in your downtown is they're there when they're kids. We all were kids. They're just a little delayed because of the economy, so they're twenty-seven, twenty-eight, like my sons. The problem is, they have kids, and they have wives, and they have husbands, then they have these kids, and they have dogs and strollers, and they soon move out, and that becomes investment properties, and these kids move out. So, we need to have them close, but my wife and I, I'm way past fifty, and we walk two miles to come to our lovely downtown every Saturday and every Sunday morning. And please, please remember our schools. We need the monetary support. The city is doing really well. I would love to see our schools get some monetary support. We keep talking about our children. I'm firmly a believer, we need to support our children, support our Livermore schools, and I support the position that the previous man came up from Sandia and Lawrence Livermore Lab. Those are great partners. We're extremely fortunate to have them here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And finally, Brooke Witherspoon. First Street Ale House.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Brooke Witherspoon. I am an owner of the First Street Ale House, a current board member and past president of Livermore Downtown, Inc. Recently, Livermore Downtown, Inc. sent out a survey to all downtown businesses. The results showed that sixty percent of our downtown businesses on survey said that they have employees trying to find housing in Livermore. Of that, eighty percent are looking for rentals. I strongly believe we need to help our Livermore talent and workforce live in a community where they work, thus relieving some of the traffic and congestion on the freeways. Walkable communities are the preferred environment for the creative class and will help attract the cultural art professionals to our community. It is also the preferred living environment for our young professionals as well as those active retired adults who wish to age in place. The American Cancer Society, the Heart Association, and mental health advocacy groups all endorse commercial and residential walkable communities as the healthiest lifestyle. And that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Phew, we got through it. Thank you ever so much. This was lots of really, really good information. I would suggest about a ten-minute break. I guess take ten minutes, and then the real work starts.
I don't want to hear a phone call tomorrow. Oh, I thought I'd do.
Okay, if we could bring it back together, just get the camera back on here. All right, okay, we're going. All right, all right, we're calling the meeting back to order again, and so once again, we're back here at the February ninth meeting of the Liver City Council, part three, I guess. So, are there any questions that the council has for any of the applicants, any refinements that you have?
Sure.
Okay, Councilman Spodolski?
I have three questions for three of the applicants. Sorry to prolong this. You know, I was expecting a groan at this point because now we're going back to questions, but I wanted to ask Lennar a question, if we have the representatives from Lennar? And if we could pull up the site plan as well for Lennar? I don't know if we have, do we have the PowerPoints or, no, not necessarily?
We can pull them up.
Okay, if it's going to take too long, I can, it's a fairly easy question without the site plan. So, if we were to theoretically say we don't like that Central Park Street cutting through the development, that would basically change your entire site plan. How would you respond to that? Is that up for negotiation, or are you essentially?
Yes, we're actually, we discussed this today about potentially decreasing the vehicular space through that area and create more walkability.
Right.
Would be my short answer to that. Yes, we're open to that. I mean, we kind of know that this is a fluid process and that things are going to move around as you go through this.
Okay, great. That was it. And I think I have the same question for Summerhill.
Oh, wait, before you go, Lennar, hang a sec. Since you're up there.
Perfect.
In the original proposal, it was written that there were forty-five townhomes, and now it's forty-five stacked flats.
Correct.
Okay, so that wasn't, it wasn't just something that was a typo.
No, it's a stacked flat, yes.
Okay, so it's, instead of forty-five townhomes, now forty-five stacked flats, and there's actually three components of fifty-five hundred square foot of, or square feet of retail, there was, in three different locations.
Correct.
And one of the apartments was optional.
Yes, it is, and when it comes to retail, we obviously would like to work with the city to make sure that, I think someone in the crowd mentioned it tonight, to make sure that the retail is viable. There's a lot of retail in the area, but we want to make sure whatever we bring in can fill up, lease up, and, you know, create that revitalization downtown.
Certainly, okay, thank you.
I've got a question.
One more for, it was brought, one more.
Sorry.
It's part of the process for seeing your, you know, your ability to, yeah.
So, one of, or a few comments from the earlier, people mentioned that there was a maximum amount of retail that would be appropriate downtown, and I think I heard the number of like five thousand, and what you're talking about is more than triple that. I mean, what is your thinking on the, how you size the amount of retail?
We talked to a couple local people as well as some commercial experts. I'm not saying that what was proposed is the best answer. I think that needs to be vetted in more detail with local patrons as well as city staff and council.
Need to call up Steve?
Sorry, the same question would apply to Summerhill with their layout. Again, the proposed mid-block street and then the South K Street extension, essentially saying, okay, you need to go back to the drawing board, sorry.
Okay, yeah, you know, we went with this layout specifically because it's in your specific plan document in terms of the circulation, and because it's a pretty large parcel, it sounded like there was desire to have the circulation connectivity, in particular because we placed the public garage in that tucked away location backing up to the First Street Retail. We thought it would be good to have three different access points to the garage, not only for when it's being constructed, but also for just connectivity, bringing people all the way from, you know, L to Livermore Avenue and just connect it through. But we're definitely open if that was desirous to make it a little bit more compact and fill it in with other things.
Great.
But I was curious if you can give any guidance as to what's the key driver of your desire to potentially eliminate that?
It would be more public space, more walkable, less, you know, cross-through traffic. I would, you know, I think there may be a desire to see just in and out of the parking garage and everything else, you know, the open space.
Okay, so maybe like a single vehicular entrance to the garage and perhaps more just pedestrian circulation through the side.
Whatever opens the site up.
Yeah, right.
That's, I think, the general gist of it.
Yeah, no, we would be open to it.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, thanks.
Any further?
Sure, and sorry, the last one is TruMark. So, the question for this would be the west, the entire west side, the townhome residences. Any thoughts or consideration for sale stacked flats or anything else that would, I don't know, open that end of the development up? Again, looking for more usable space. Just, I know I'm, you know, asking this, you know, kind of putting you right there on the spot, hey, destroy your plan and give me something different, but.
No, it's not destroying the plan. It's a very viable solution and a very popular floor plan in many locations, and I would suggest maybe flats and townhouses working together.
Okay.
And we could explore all that.
Okay, great, thank you. That was it.
Any questions from any of the council members? Okay, let me see.
One upstairs.
Oh, yes, certainly.
In the staff briefing last night, again, beginning the night adonomie, just for the audience at home who may be tuning in for the first time, and we hear about using off-site other lands, could you briefly reiterate what's in-city ownership that we, in effect, are the seller-developer of in this particular scope of discussion, and the funding that purchased those lands and the funding that has to be repaid? In other words, what's our obligation on all this?
So, there are the two parcels, the two, or there are actually multiple parcels, but the two areas, the area behind the larger parking area and then the area next to the bankhead. The larger area was purchased primarily with affordable housing in lieu funds, so that would have to be paid back at some point. The other one has some limitations, the other parcel has some limitations, primarily because of, because it rested within the redevelopment agency, and as we, as we sell that parcel, we'll have some limitations on what can and can't happen with that funding.
And the approximate value of the housing in lieu repayment?
About fourteen million dollars.
Okay, peace out.
Very good. Honorable mayor, I'm your city manager, Mark Roberts, and the next part of the process here is actually where we try and take the diverse opinions of each individual council member and turn those into a direction from the council. So, our recommendation to you is
So, our recommendation to you is that we go through a process where each council member states their top two choices on both sides, the residential side and the hotel side. Obviously, if it's a linked project, you get one of each on those. And then we sort of take a look. We'll put up a chart. We'll display what folks' choices are. You don't have to tell us a first and a second. You simply say, my top two are. If you have a particularly profound, you know, advantage of sort of saying what those are, that's fine. But what we're looking for, it's sort of a pass, no pass at this point. The folks who make it to the next step will be equal, no matter whether you rank them one or two. They'll both be your finalists at this stage. We'll look across essentially all of the council members and see if there is sort of a building consensus at that point. We'd recommend that at that point, you essentially enumerate to each other sort of the advantages or the strengths to see whether there is any movement. In other words, if there seems to be unanimity in everybody, you're done. And that's a very, that's a very short process. Assuming that there is some disagreement and some diversion of opinion on who your finalists should be, a discussion among yourselves. And then if that does not resolve it, then asking each for a third on both sides. And then essentially trying to pick a top two out of that. Your rules allow you to great latitude in how you go about this process. They allow you great latitude in how many you invite back. Your staff recommends that that be a very compact number. What you're trying to signal, like two. That's what our recommendation is. Yeah, it's not quite one yet. We're ultimately getting to one. But what we're trying to do is really have you clearly indicate your favorites while at the same time, after picking those, providing direction to those finalists as to the things both you really liked about their proposals. So, we don't accidentally screw that up as we're going through our final process here. And just as important, those kinds of things that you'd like them to take a look at. Those might range from things that are, you know, quite easy to do to some that might be a little bit of more of an effort. And if you can indicate those things, the more guidance you can collectively give to us. If however, in that process, we get, you know, distinctly opposite direction from you, then we'll sort of, you'll have to slow down Mr. Mayor and actually, you know, we may have to vote on some things there to sort of get some clarity on that. But hopefully, at this point, the general guidance will allow both a direction and some flexibility for your applicants then to respond to that. They may scratch their head and kind of come out with something that's a little different than what you literally said, but meets your objective. So, the more your comments can talk about the objective you're trying to meet, not literally, please move this street, you know, eight and a half feet to the north. It's like, my objective is to get, fill in the blank. It's like, ah, all right, then staff and the finalists will do that. So, first up would be essentially, Honorable Mayor, you starting a polling process with each of the council members, asking them for their top two favorites in each of the categories. And then we'll go from there.
All right, everybody clear on, oh, we've got a little matrix up there. Everybody clear on the process? Okay, let's start with Councilmember Warner.
Might be clear on the process. I'm not necessarily clear on the answers at this point. So, I will.
Me too.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'll tell you where I'm at on this. And just in real shorthand, then we can go from there. And I imagine there are gonna be a few iterations. I think that the clear number one spot is TruMark for the residential. I think, I think we heard that reinforced a number of times in the audience. And that's what I liked about it. I liked the way the approach was with the physical architecture and, you know, the building architecture, then the landscape architecture, the open, you know, the market concept, and the extent to which they understood Livermore and just the general plan. And that's not to say that I thought that that plan was perfect. And definitely, we're gonna have to think about some things, but it came closest to the mark and I think it was a cut above everybody else. At that point, that's where I'm at. So now, when you go to, what do I do with the number two with respect to the residential part of this? I'm looking at Lennar as possibly a little bit ahead of Summerhill, but not largely. So, there's some comments in there, but I'm close, right? So, I'm gonna have to, gonna have to hear a lot more discussion there. On the hotel side, my answer is kind of like none of the above. So, I don't, frankly, I think that, the comment that downtown is a, you know, is a jewel and we gotta think about it. The concept of something that belongs on the freeway and we'll just put it down there and maybe gussy it up a little bit doesn't appeal to me. You know, I took a lot of heat on the spot question, but it was a way of trying to elicit, what are we really talking about? And I think through the conversation, we found out what people were really talking about. I was pleased that the owner of the Purple Orchid said he wanted real competition. I'm very pleased again when TruMark was asked, what would a hotel, what would they think would be a good hotel? Healdsburg. And then go just look it up on our website and see what kind of amenities it's got and what it means. So, personally, what I would do at the moment? I think I would go forward on the retail side. I think that what I also heard is on the hotel side that maybe something that's really a draw on the weekend doesn't pencil at the moment. If we get a good situation going downtown and there's more, even more vibrancy than we've already got, maybe we rethink about it. So, at the moment, I would, personally, I'd split this up to two projects. I've told you where I'm at on the residential and I'm nowhere on the hotel.
Okay, Councilman Spodolski?
Great, thank you. First, I do want to thank everybody involved in this process. In particular, the applicants for putting in the time. Staff, I know the amount of work that has gone into this and the stresses with the process. I thank you for that. And also, the residents and everyone who took the time to stick out last night or watch it on TV and then stay here tonight as well. One thing I'd like to point out, I do sometimes keep a running tally of comments. And I was absolutely amazed that we didn't get a comment saying, leave it as a parking lot. Every single person who spoke this evening had some idea for the site. And I think that is absolutely great. Because in the past, we have had people show up to the council and say, you know what, pave paradise, put up, or don't put up the parking lot. Just pave the whole thing and leave it at that. So, thank you. And also, the time accuracy was excellent tonight. Only a few buzzes, so that was, that was great. You know, what I'm looking for with the residential, I want to see something that residents, not of the particular site, but residents throughout Livermore would like to walk through and use in some manner. Whether that's some type of, you know, the paseos or open space, something that would attract people to actually walk through that neighborhood. What I do not like are designs where the homes look like they are an island unto themselves and that nobody else really, other than the residents, would use the area around the homes or any of the amenities located within that complex. So, with that said, I do have two residential that I think are my top two, and in no particular order, it would be Lennar and TruMark. I am very interested in seeing, at least seeing further proposals and development for the hotel sites. I understand, you know, when we are talking iconic hotels, I think there's a tendency to say, no, we don't want anything branded. And I'm not too sure that that is possible at this point. I think almost all hotels, at least the newer hotels, are branded in some way. They're affiliated with somebody. They all subscribe to the rewards programs and want the promotions from the hotel sites and the benefits that come with affiliating yourself with a brand name. But I still think that there is room to create a unique hotel. You don't have to have a Hilton or a Marriott in bright neon flashing blasting the area. It could be, you know, a more subtly branded hotel, it seems. So, I would like to further explore those hotel options. What I would encourage is particularly looking, possibly to partner with brands that maybe are not in the area. If we do have a lack of, and I'm just pulling names out of the sky here, if we don't have many Marriotts or if we don't have many Hyatts, then looking at their higher-end offerings. I think that when people, at least from my, and I'm talking a little bit off the cuff here, but when I'm looking for a hotel and a nice hotel to stay, I have a preferred brand, I go to their website, I click on the map and I see where they're located where I'm staying. And if I don't see that, then I go to another brand. And I think if we have that brand that's nowhere else in the tri-valley, maybe that would help attract people. I don't know, you tell me. I'm interested in hearing further proposals and thoughts on this. So, with that said, I could comfortably recommend moving forward with proposals from the Compass Project and also RSVP Investments. Thank you.
Councilmember Warner?
We're gonna have time for comments and direction later, right? I'm gonna have a bunch, so I'm gonna hold them off for now and be very brief in order. TruMark and RSVP Investments and Lennar, both residential and hotel.
Okay, Vice Mayor Gary?
Where it gets sticky, the vote and then comment. Because I think all of us have substantive comments and observations how we arrive at this point. But let me say succinctly to my peers as we listen to each other where I'm coming from. First of all, I'm thrilled with the diversity of proposals, opinions, applicants, and conversation. Really, pat yourselves all on the back, everybody at home, email, phone calls. This has been one of the most polite, engaging discussions about something critically important. So, what lens do I come at this with? And it's actually changed a little bit over time. I don't think this is an either-or, housing or hotel ranking. I've always looked, and if you look at my comments over the last two years, this is, should be an aggregation of land that forms the heart of Livermore. And I agree with the statement tonight for fifty years to come. And we put two RFPs out, but you know what the market brought us? Were two combination proposals. And I've heard so much from so many universally about a hotel. I'm not willing to split this, as an individual council member, and risk letting the hotel be frittered away while we entitle housing. So, said this way, this isn't about housing. This is about the center of Livermore and mixed uses and all of our needs. So, from that lens and market strength and capitalization, Lennar. Market strength, hotel partner, capitalization to weather a recession? Summerhill. I'm sorry, those are the two giants in the room and they both had the foresight to bring a hotel partner. And this council member won't entertain entitlements for housing without a guaranteed hotel. I think our leverage now to get the downtown hotel is to couple the development of all the land. Don't be narrow focused on one hotel and one parcel and not across the street, but to say, what's the best combination deal for the aggregate acreage the city has at play? That's my perspective.
So, again, we're gonna have a collaborative discussion up here tonight about what are the components that we find the most attractive about all of these? From my perspective, I think that, again, in no particular order, but we did hear a number of folks tonight talk about the TruMark project. I think that there were some compelling elements to TruMark. And also, I do agree with Councilmember Gary that this, the one iconic thing we've heard over and over and over again is the hotel. And for that reason, I would also pick the Lennar Compass Project because I think that they came with a very strong proposal for the hotel. So, I would go with Lennar Compass and also TruMark. Pardon me? There was only one other hotel and that would be the RSVP. And I think that they indicated interest in working on the project. So, I could go with that as well. Okay, so...
So, at this point, you have two choices. So, just looking at the math there, seems like the residential part of Lennar is a pretty popular thing. So, you have, you have, all five of you listed them among your top two. So, they would return. They also control the strongest combination of hotel. For the four of you who chose a hotel component, all of you included Lennar. So, just looking at the map there, that would be the first item here. The second choice here looks like a combination of RSVP and TruMark, but that has less unanimity to it, just a clique less on that. And so, the question is, you know, mathematically, we have majorities of the council giving direction on that. And so, the point is up to you is whether further discussion on those issues or whether you would like to shift into more direction at this point if the council as a whole is ultimately comfortable or whether you'd like to explore further discussion before you make that second pick on both the residential and the hotel site.
From my perspective, I'd like to go over it just a bit and talk about what it was that particularly attracted us about each of these projects. Great, I think there's some great unanimity here. Obviously, there were things that we all liked, but to make sure that we all liked the same thing or perhaps we liked different parts of different projects. So, I think it'd be a good opportunity to just get some feedback from the council, what it was that drew you to that particular project, what components, what elements you liked. Obviously, we heard a great deal of comment tonight from the public. And I certainly appreciate everybody staying last night and also staying tonight and offering your comments. I also got a number of emails. So, at this point, let's talk about what it was that we did find attractive, but we want to make sure is in the finished product as we move ahead. So, since it started at that end, let's start at this end. Councilman Spodolski?
Sure. You know, I did like the partnership that Lennar formed. As you can guess from my question earlier, I wasn't exactly happy with the site plan. I don't like the road running through the middle of the project. So, I think it needs the most amount of work in terms of the two residentials that I've seen so far. I think they have a very strong partnership with the hotelier and I like that aspect. I still need more details about the residential and the hotel. And I'll say that for both RSVP and the Compass Project. I would like to see what they come up with next. I think that they are, that there is potential there. I don't believe that we have seen any final concept or final proposal that just strikes me as, yeah, that's it. Or that's even, you know, moderately it at this point. But when we were asking questions of both groups, there was, it appeared that there was some flexibility as to number of rooms, the meeting space, the branding. I think that's all things that we should consider and work with from this point forward. And then going over to TruMark Homes, I really do believe that they are onto something here, to put it quite plainly, bluntly, whatever you want to call it. I like the walkability. I like the integration into the community. I am concerned a little bit about the townhome residences on that west side. That was my question about the potential for residential flats. And with, I could say with both projects, I think TruMark, you know, is getting there. But I would like to see the more walkable and maximizing our open space and truly integrating these projects into the community. I've mentioned before that we need to be very careful. We need to make sure that we are not destroying the character of downtown. Now, what is the character? I've asked many people and I've received many responses and we hear tonight about, you know, who believes, you know, what they believe the character of downtown is. So, to me, it is retaining that walkability, integrating it into our existing downtown and making sure that the, any residential component isn't an island unto itself and... that the, any residential component isn't an island unto itself and look like some type of castle that is not accessible by residents. So, I don't know. I think I've pretty much said all I want to say about both projects at this point. Again, they need more work. This is, and this is also a comment that I've received, and I think we've all received this comment, hey, you're approving something on Tuesday night. That's it, that's going in. That is not the case. We are looking at partners, we are developing concepts, and we really need to flush out a lot of details about these projects. So I'm excited about the potential, and I look forward to seeing what, hopefully what both groups can, can bring to in the next round.
Councilor Turner?
Comments and vision, basically. A lot of people ask us, what is your vision for the downtown? And my vision for the downtown is kind of combined with every comment and conversation I've had with people in the businesses and people that live here. And we've heard a lot about the future tonight and needing to be mindful for the future. Well, first off, the millennial generation is our future, and we need to support the millennial generation. And so those of you that are finalists, I want you to really consider that. Research shows the millennial generation is the first generation since before us that spend more money on services than goods. They don't buy, they don't spend a hundred dollars on jeans like my daughter did. They go to the thrift shop so that they can buy their $10 cup of coffee. It's just the generation. So we need a service focused downtown. They don't buy food and cook unless it comes in a box from Blue Apron and they just have to throw it in a pan. They go to our restaurants. They are very savvy. They need internet. They need all of these kind of things, and they need housing. Our policemen cannot afford to live in Livermore. Our nurses, our teachers cannot afford to live in Livermore. That is an outrage, and we need to fix it. The scientists that get attracted to the national laboratories share an apartment. My, I have friends, three scientists sharing an apartment, because that's what they can afford. They can't have families. That is not the dream of living in Livermore. We need to fix this problem. So my vision on, in no particular order, and I'm sure you've heard a lot of this, we need a walkable community. I want a passeo that goes from the Bankhead Theater all the way to the under end of the project, where people can walk without threat of a car running them down. We'd love to close off First Street at some point to, and have it pedestrian, but our business owners don't like, want that. So let's have a walkable passeo built where you already have it. So we still have parking on First Street, and then we have a walkable passeo behind. So put that in your plans, walkable community. You've heard from a lot of people, open space, green space. Parks are important in Livermore. Your project has got to involve parks. If you've ever seen, it doesn't have to be huge. Lizzie Fountain is tiny, but God, hundreds of kids go there all the time. Make sure there's some wonderful features for children in our community. Make sure they're focused on the arts. Art is important to Livermore. We don't need, I'm sorry, we don't need a 10,000 square foot conference center to embrace arts. We need arts, we need places for public art, we need places to display art, we need places for the visual arts. We need art blended into your project wherever it's at. We need bike parking. We need a lot of people that ride bikes. We need bike trails. Your projects should involve paths for pedestrians, but also separated paths for bikes. The community that's gonna be moving into your buildings are gonna need bike paths. We do want green builders. I do, at least. We want somebody that's gonna be looking at green projects, at use of solar, green building projects. Be creative with your rooftops. We want open space. We have a limited amount of space, put some open space on the top of the building. Make a rooftop garden. Make a playground for the kids that live in your building. Put the pool up top. You know, think about what you can do. Put solar panels up there, anything like that. You know, you can actually have a dog park on top of one of the buildings. Be creative with what you do, because Livermore likes to live outside. The variable rooftops, yes, yes, yes. Don't, don't front South Livermore or any of the streets with a four-story building. Make it really gradual, so that's pretty from the start. Yes, we want a Hillsburg Hotel with a spa. But we want it affordable. I don't know how you're gonna do that. But that's the challenge. It has to be something where, that accepts a government per diem for the, for our business travelers, but that also has the amenities that, that we expect our CEOs to want to have. I don't know what kind of hotel that is. I leave that in your hands. But that's what we need. Open space throughout, small little pocket parks, as much as you can eke out larger spaces. We had Doug talk about walking through Italy and the fountains and all that. We love water fountains here in Livermore. We also like drinkable water without wasting plastic bottles. So give us some drinking fountains for people and dogs, please. Huh? Well, no. One up top for the people, one down below for the doggies, but yeah, give us some of that. Get into the Lizzie Fountain. Okay, the parking garage, yes, hide it, please hide it. Make it look nice. Lots of green plants around it. But make sure you have parking for electronic cars. Let's do look for the future. We want bike parking, maybe even a special place for Uber or different people to be parking and dropping off to move people through the downtown. I actually absolutely echo, I don't want to see a project that doesn't have flats. Some townhomes, but there are no flats on the, on the, on the retail market for people to purchase. We've got older people that want to live in the downtown and don't want to go three flights of stairs. We've got people that just don't want to go three flights of stairs. We've got disabled people. You've got to have some stacked flats in your project. The hotel, be smart about it. Make it as large as you can with the rooms, because we do need the room space. Rooftop pool is a fantastic idea. You can do a very nice little spa. Like I mentioned the other night, I was actually serious. Do some outdoor massage, do a little, some, it doesn't have to be a full-service spa, but have that kind of amenity. You could use the outdoors. There's, it's, it's, we have good weather here, so make use of it. Meeting space is important. You need to be talking to the national laboratories. You need to make sure we have adequate meeting space. When I've talked to people at the labs, they're like, we are happy with meeting space for 150 people. We'd be happier with 300, but 150 works. So make sure you're talking with our Downtown Inc. people, talking with our laboratories, talking with our wine growers and our wedding businesses to make sure we get enough space. The conference center that we've heard about a lot about, I don't think we need a separate conference center. We need adequate space in a hotel. A separate conference center, I don't see who's gonna pay for it. But if we put adequate meeting space within a hotel, the hotel's gonna pay for it, and then we don't have to worry about subsidizing it from here on out. And, and then as to what I liked about all the projects coming into last night, RSVP was not on my list, and TruMark was not on my list. Lennar was at the top of my list, as was another developer. Lennar mainly because of their financials, their size. I'm not ecstatic about the project, but it's, it's a good start, and that's where we wanted to be. We wanted to qualify developers, and I'm really happy with what they brought to the table. TruMark blew me away, because they understand Livermore, and they understand our vision. And I'm not saying Lennar can't understand our vision. I'm thinking they're gonna, last night and tonight, they've learned a lot about Livermore. And, but I think TruMark gets it with your project with the market. That could absolutely end up incorporating the arts and doing some really nice, cool, open spaces. RSVP had some really good thoughts and well, and what impressed me the most, and I don't know how many people noticed this, last night when the, when the folks from TruMark got up and left the room, so did RSVP, and they went out and had a conversation. So they're already talking about, I'm hoping, that that was the purpose of that conversation. They're already, I think they've already noticed that there's already a potential partnership there, and I would strongly encourage that partnership to move forward and bring us a blended project.
Councilor Warner?
I went first, I don't get to go last. So that's quite an extensive list, and I would agree with most of it, although I'm not sure that everything that you said could actually simultaneously be accommodated, but I think those are all very good points. I back up and say, from this point of view, in my own career, I've traveled a lot around the world. And one of the things I do whenever I go to any of these cities is I walk them. And so to me, that's, it's hard to define, I'm not an architect, but I know which cities I want to walk around, and I know which ones I'm just not going anywhere in, right? So there are really a number of good ones. And, you know, I started, I spent a lot of time in Boston, and that's a very walkable city. If you've been to Melbourne, it's walkable, you know, London, Paris, you know, Rome, it is, they're all incredible. And so there is this mixture of things that you, that attract people of different varieties. I mean, there's the fountains, there's little places where people gather. People play in games or they're, in one sort or another. So, and I think trying to get that character of the city is really important. And so that, of all the things, I think is, how is that, what's that character? So then, and that's, that's a very, you know, I, you know, it's different, you know, people can have what their sense. But if you've walked around a lot of cities, it's there. And I think Livermore has a lot of that, and we need to reinforce that. So that's kind of where I would go. And I don't know what, what it all actually looks like, but some of the proposals made me feel like we were gonna continue in that kind of tradition, and you would still see a lot of people wanting to go downtown and be there. And I think it was mentioned earlier, just putting a nice street in front of a residence doesn't mean you want to go walk in front of their, their house, right? So it's got to be a reason to be there, and we, and I think we've seen a variety of proposals there. So then when you get down to the, sort of the, gritty, how do you, some of the design elements, I mean, so access is really important. So we look at these, you know, one massive garage, and only a couple of exits and colliding between the people that want to come down there to visit and those that live there. I mean, we, so just the practicalities of the access are very important. I think the dealing really well with the back of First Street is an important element, and, and I think we saw some examples of how that could be done. But we've got to get in the practical part of that, and balancing the service to the First Street establishments as well as the pedestrian circulation. We've got to do it. Too much massing, I don't, you know, is not gonna be good. And so the ability to mask that is important, and the ability to have variety of heights is also there. And then, you know, the, the open space so that people want to go there and be there, and then there's some reason in that open space to be there. So those are the, you know, the concepts. And I think that as we go through the designs, and, you know, I just heard a number of particulars there, that's, that's the way I look at it. Excuse me. The other thing that I resonate with is the need for the mixture of the housing types. And that we're not targeting one age group with one kind of need, but that to the extent there's a variety, then we'll get a even more vibrancy, because we're not just gonna have one of all the same thing. And then the last thing I'll mention is that I absolutely support the need to get, you know, allow, you know, our offspring to be able to live here. The reality, though, is this isn't a Livermore problem. It's a, it's a problem in Livermore, but it's not alone. This is not driven by Livermore. It's not solvable by Livermore. You're not gonna solve the Bay Area housing problem by building, we cannot build our way out of that. So I think we've got to have a little bit of practicality here as to what we're really talking about. And I don't know, and when we get into the discussions of what's actually gonna happen and what the price points are, I think we can get real about this. But at the moment, I know what the aspiration is, but I don't see how that works. And anyway, we've got a, we've got a Bay Area housing problem, and the fact that people are coming from the Central Valley and going all the way over to the peninsula, we don't solve our problem by building a few hundred units. It's just not gonna happen. So let's, let's make this a really well-done project. I think I heard a number of times, it's important to get this right. It's going to define the character of the city for a long time to come. And we can't make, we gotta, we gotta make the right set of compromises, but we can't, we can't screw it up. And I don't know what perfect looks like, and I don't think anything can be perfect, but we want it to be the best that we can within the, all the constraints. So other than that, I think that the, we've, from what's up there, I think we've got a couple of good selections in each category to get somewhere. And as we have the further iterations on the plans and more meetings, I think we'll be able to be quite specific as the likes and don't likes on various plans. The last thing I'll mention is that I was, again, the reason I was struck with TruMark is the landscaping aspect of this. And that's what's gonna draw people downtown and make it walkable. That's a very important element. And the ability to integrate that landscaping into the walls of these larger structures, especially the parking, that's, that's really innovative, and it's going to make a difference. So that kind of design element, I think, is very important.
Vice Mayor Gary?
You know what's really nice about this is we're not really disagreeing. No, 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 no. There's commonality appear, there's commonality in the aspirations of the community. So we kind of go back to the high-level things. Do we want it all? Yeah, we, we need workforce mixed housing. We need the appropriate additional retail, and I think we got some good feedback tonight to take into further consideration. We need the hotel. There is no reason we can't blend arts, sciences. I'm not saying Don Meeker's right at only 500 square feet, and I'm, I'm not saying a huge number of square feet's right, but I, but I think some open meeting exhibit, farmer's market, shared reasons to be a pedestrian downtown really, really work. At the end of the day, though, I said this at the beginning, I'm gonna reiterate it, we're picking a dance partner who has the technical and economic competency to weather the next recession and to see a multi-year project to fruition that all three applicants have said are in the order of a $90 million lift. This is not just building a few hundred townhomes or apartments. I saw a lot of pieces in all the projects we could ultimately, and I think many of us would support mixed-use hotel, parking, pedestrian-friendly, appropriate scale, pace, commitment, lead, energy-saving, green, all that. Let me expand on the farmer's market. When I first saw that in TruMark's, it was like, well, duh, we, we have a little one. We would, of course, want that, and could it be inside, outside? Could it be rotating arts exhibits? So then, after last night's presentation, two things struck me. The placement of it in the TruMark proposal in a two-story building, all of a sudden made me nervous that Little Blacksmith Square was gonna look out of place. And with a two-story building between Blacksmith and the Uncle Hughes Building, across the street from the Tall Bank of Italy, a lower building, and possibly a three-story hotel, all of a sudden turns that block of North Livermore into a note sunlight downtown San Francisco tunnel. Think about the solar angles. If you take that block from First to Railroad and make it all parallel buildings except Blacksmith Square. I think there needs to be spatial. So now let me turn to why Lennar, from the first site rendering hit it out of the park with me. They got form-based design. If you go back and look at their plot rendering, it looks from the northeast to the southeast, starts with Blacksmith, has low massing, rises to the center and the far side of the project. I think the space around Blacksmith could well be a closed or open market, rotating art exhibit, shareable, walkable space of some, of some type. And I think you build on the flatness of Blacksmith before you start, you start to go high. Let me quickly run through my notes on the, my three, the companies. Lennar had the most housing units, which is important to me. They initially proposed the most square footage of retail at 16K. I'd certainly be willing, given what I heard tonight, to trade staff, to trade down some retail square footage for the farmer's market artistic, walkable, livable thing. I won't say it's open or closed. Parking, I like wrapped, with some surface, especially for handicapped. TruMark lost initially, big, big points with me, TruMark. I think you nailed the interview, and you nailed the community conversation, but I'm looking community conversation, but I'm looking beyond to the design and the wherewithal to, to really complete the community visioning. And a monolithic singular garage of a thousand spaces just flat turned me off. To me, that's, that's a Disneyland-sized garage in the middle of this very pretty downtown core. So I think the parking needs to be broke, broken up, and some of the other concepts we saw did that. I don't know that having the street straight through it isn't necessarily good or bad. I think a little crooked passeo may be more of a wandering thing. And I think with traffic engineering, if they can work, maybe some entrances only, exits out to the parking structures. You can get a sense of walking space, but get cars in and out of some detached garages, perhaps. Lennar certainly has the fiscal and equity strength. And I also think their hotel partner has done a lot of smaller boutique hotels. And I think out of all three hotel partners with respect, Dana Woodner, if I'm pronouncing that right, probably has the best pedigree to try to bring the right brand and operator to town. Lennar has $2.5 billion in development, and their current loan to value capitalization's 50/50. They've got 50% equity in almost everything they do. Summer Hill brought 219 units, but made special attention to affordability and seniors and apartments. Little less retail, 6,000, 6,800 square feet, both, again, said 125-room hotel. I thought T2 Hotel was interesting, in that when pressed for a brand decision, he spoke from a knowledge base, and we initially viscerally said, oh, upscale Marriott, how can that work? And then Councilman Turner appropriately said, well, thank you for telling us the truth. I mean, we do want specialists to tell us what we need to hear, not just what we, we, we dream to hear. Back to the project cast a pencil. We've had multiple developers now say something in the low 100-room count pencils. Summer Hill wants to put about $22 million in equity into a $90 million project, that's serious stake. They have one-stop design experience. And I think that also struck me, that they have hotel build experience with T2, but they also can own and manage. So they, they call themselves a one-stop shop. So start to think about your master builder, maybe he wants to own a piece of it and operate a piece of it. I think there's synergy and strength in that. TruMark, I've talked about their pros and cons. They're okay on fiscal equity and debt. They put about $30 million in in equity and about $63 million in loan financing. RSVP, I think someday RSVP is such a strong talent team, they're going to own all of us. I think, no, seriously, I think they're up and coming. But right now, I'm nervous about the next downturn. And RSVP last night, in one sentence, put, took a backseat with me when he said, I have to finish what's in the construction pipeline three years out before I can get more lending. That's a small, upstart, smart, agile company, but he's got financing and loan-to-value limits. Now, if he wants to partner with somebody else, that's free-market enterprise. But I said Summer Hill number two, because at least T2 has strong hotel connections with a lot of little brands. Aside from last night's Marriott comment, I went back and reread T2 today. And he's done boutique hotels with a lot of the different brands. So we, we backed him in a corner on the spot in the interview, and heard one thing, that's not the only brand T2 represents. So that's why, community, I came away with, I think we've got two heavy-hitting firms, both with strong hotel partners. And I'm going to be very nervous about anybody that comes in on a wing and a prayer and says, wait for me, I'll catch up to you. This is the community where Tubbsville sat vacant for how many years? This is the community that was promised the first outlet center that never leased one store, that sat empty, and then it turned into retail? This is the community that waited years for a movie theater, and bless their hearts, the Vine re-envisioned themselves? We've got a good chunk of land with a thriving downtown in an economy that hasn't quite yet stalled. Let's strike and move forward while we've got some great, great semifinalists here. And if that means, I'm not saying I'd count TruMark out, but I'm just saying TruMark didn't have the vision to bring a hotel operator to the table. So if they're only number two, I think, to my council peers, we're cutting ourselves off effectively from one, where in terms of capitalization, only one and a half hotel partners. And I'm not ready, as I said at the outset, to settle for a promised hotel. I want the real deal, along with the mixed-use housing. Thanks for listening.
Okay, so, great, great insights. I work for some great people up here, so thank you for all of that. The inclusionary housing, we've talked about that, that this is very important. And that will allow some of the millennials to come in and afford to live in this community. It's kind of telling that a millennial cannot find an apartment in Livermore that is not older than he is. We haven't built an apartment complex in Livermore in 30 years. So I think it's important that we do provide that mix of housing. I, I do like the comment about solar and about the, the garden, garden rooftops. I think that's, not only helps cool the, the neighborhoods, but it provides that extra space. So I think that's, that's good. Some of the likes and dislikes, the, that iconical look of the Lennar Compass Project, the way it incorporated into the community, I thought that was a very strong element. Contrary to my vice mayor, I was a little concerned with the, with the density of the Lennar project. I think that needed a little bit of more open space, a little more breathing room on the project. We saw a lot of contemporary and industrial-type architecture. I personally lean more toward the, the bungalow, the craftsman look, the Alexan midtown architecture I liked. The tuck-under parking for some of the townhomes and the flats, I think, works well, rather than having, you know, larger flat parking lots that just absorb more heat. The, again, RSVP, I was also concerned that they may be lacking capacity, unless they were to partner with somebody, somebody like TruMark that had a, an ability to, to weather some of the rough spots. Let's see, I, I was also excited about, we talked a great deal about arts and culture within the, in, in spaces that would be able to, to incorporate those within the community. I was also intrigued by several of the developers are talking about live-workspace. We do have some live-workspace in the downtown. I think that works very well, where people can, can also age in place. I think that that's, that's important. There were some folks that talked about concerns about having too many people downtown, increasing the congestion. But this is going to be a walkable community. People aren't going to be driving into the downtown. They're going to be living in the downtown. And again, like Councilmember Warner, I love walking in, in communities when I, when I am on travel. That's an important component, where you draw people into that downtown. The marketplace, I thought that was fantastic. My vice mayor's comment about the, creating that tunnel like a downtown canyon, sensitivity to that, I think that's, that's also very important. We've talked about the rich agricultural heritage and maintaining that within the architectural space. So, you know, one of the fun things about being last is a lot of my comments were already taken. So, let's see.
Oh, certainly, yeah, sure.
I was asked a question at break, and staff can help flesh this out. I think there's still a little bit of questioning about, when does the public reengage and what shapes what? We're picking, through a narrowing competition, a dance partner. So round one was to cut the longer list to two or three. Round two is to have them refine concepts, both fiscally and design, and us to pick number one to be the exclusive development partner. And the real community engagement, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, really starts in round three, when the, the preferred singular partner is ready to work with staff, planning, and the community, and really have the collaborative design conversations. Is that a fair restatement?
I'd tweak it just a touch, which is, I think your community engagement began when you issued the RFP, and you got a lot of feedback then. The, the community engagement continued this evening with 50 separate commenters in great detail, in addition to those who wrote comments to you. But you are correct, we have one more step when we will cut from two to one, where, again, my expectation is, knowing this community, we'll have dozens and dozens of folks out telling us what they like and don't like, and who we should pick. But you're right, after those four steps and those four engagements, we actually start with a project. I mean, traditionally, when you have a project enter and, and go through an entitlement process, you start at that point. You know, we will actually have had four sessions in great detail before that. Then we actually start the entitlement process. Now, it's a fairly well-informed entitlement process. Again, we would expect the same themes to come up, that have been raised now repeatedly at each step of the process. And we hope each time, we're getting closer and closer to that magical mix of these various things, and the push and pull of fitting those things that, that can fit, paying for those things that can be paid for, moving it around, thinking about it differently. But you're exactly correct, we have several more steps before we even start the entitlement process. The entitlement process then involves being in front of your planning commission, who spends an enormous amount of time on the details, look, feel, materials, colors, the pavers, all of those sorts of things, the tree varieties, how many shrubs you have, what species they are, all of those sorts of things. On a project of this scale, that's going to probably involve a workshop first, and then a ultimate decision-making process after that. It'll come to you. You'll be sitting, in that case, in your role as a regulator at that point, before you do your final approval. So your role up to this point has been as property owner. You've been basically doing all of your tasks as essentially someone you wish to sell a piece of property to. The great news is, you're not only the property owner, you're the regulator. So it's good to be you. Because pretty much, there are no other levers you can use. You, you basically have money, you have regulation, and you have the choice of whether to sell or not. That's pretty complete control. So you are correct, we've got a lot more neat places to have great conversations. And I think as you've seen the projects evolve from our initial ideas with the RFP and getting feedback from the community to what you saw tonight, which a lot of people said, hey, they listened to us, and other people said, I've got some more ideas. I think we'll continue to see that process. And so your staff is extraordinarily excited about this.
Can I make a comment about that? And I, I think, and, you know, we need to be reminded that this is conceptual, that the, the proposers had, you know, what period of time to develop these conceptual plans, a matter of months. I, I am very much looking forward to details in the next round. As I said before, I don't have enough information to say that, yes, you know, this, this corridor, the sightlines are going to be horrible, or, you know, a, a parking garage will work or not. I have initial knee-jerk reactions to that, but we, we need the details. And I think we are giving some great input, and I think there's many great ideas up here tonight. But I think a lot of that will be answered in, in the next round, where we could start really kind of picking things apart with some of these proposals, and also, once our, our planning commission gets a hold of it.
And, and Councilmember, yes, Spodowski, as we move to this next stage for last, best, and final, you'll get another layer of information on that. And then once you pick a partner, ultimately, you'll get, you know, the true, very detailed, I mean, because they'll basically be entitling a project. So this next level is yet one more level of information on that. And again, especially pointed at trying to answer some of the specific concerns that were raised this evening. That's honestly where your, where your finalists will spend their resources, is to try and answer the things that were brought up tonight. That's why you told them those things. The next level is, okay, yes, I like you, project proponent A, and now I need you to do A, B, C, and D. There's another whole level of direction that happens once you pick your finalist. Again, continuing to hone down to get to the right place here.
And one of the, one of the things that I think needs to be emphasized, and, and something that, that, hearing the comments jogged my memory, everybody's concerned about the look of the parking garage, whether it's one parking garage, two parking garages, what the access is. You know, when I, when I hear that you can put one in the center and hide it, I think, you know, you shouldn't be developing properties. You should have a Vegas show where you're making planes disappear and, and other large items, because to me, I, I can't, at this point, I can't wrap my head around shading or, or covering a parking structure. So, again, the next round, I, I think is going to be very critical to, to this project. We could theoretically say that, you know, that we, we don't like the details of either project in the next round, you know, and, and, you know, kick it back even further. I don't know. I hope that doesn't go down that route. And I'm, I'm very encouraged by what I've seen, but that's still a possibility. So let's bring on the details.
Councilmember Warner?
One other thing I want to, sort of, that still concerns me, and I think Vice Mayor Gary made some really good points about how we go about selecting the, the dance partner here and everything else. We, I don't believe that the RFP process we went through was necessarily the best, because, well, it gave us some awkwardness here. And I'm, maybe I'm the only one who feels this, but we, I, what I, you, the two hotel people that could compete substantially are the ones that built, that did the combo bid. And if we, and I think that's one of the things that's driving you. And, and I acknowledge that. So if I'm thinking about it from a hotel point of view, and I had to do it, it'd be the, the two combo bids. But, but in terms of the aesthetics and the look and feel and everything else, I couldn't go to those two. Otherwise, it would have been simple, and I would have ended up where you are. I just want to somehow have us explore and be real clear on this, that our, is our criteria the ability to do both at once? Because I'm very concerned that, for a lot of the reasons that Vice Mayor Gary mentioned, that RSVP will not be able to come through with a viable hotel option, and that, as a result, we're going to default, because we really don't have a matched pair here on the hotel. So if we let the hotel drive this, I think that's backwards. I think, I'd like to have a hotel, but I really want to have the walkable draw downtown. And that hotel is not it, right? It might bring people for other things, but it's not the thing that makes the downtown the place to go and hang out. It's a convenience for people who want to come here and stay, and it's a very important thing. But it's not the driver. And I'm afraid that the way we're setting up this process, we're having the tail wag the dog here. I'm really worried about that. So I think we have to be real clear that whether we have two projects or not, and to the extent this is separable. Because if we go down the path, and we got to have them both now, and if we, if we iterate the, the sad history of how long we've waited for various things, and have that drive us to grab for something now, I think we're going to make a mistake. So where I'm firmly coming from is, I'd leave that as a parking lot right now. It's convenient, leave it be. I'm not going to, I don't want to settle for a mistake. And we're, we have that, so I really want to be clear that we've, the thing that's driving this is the West property. Now, I don't know how we get this, because we still want to maybe have the option of slipping the hotel on that side and all of that, maybe. But not anymore, I don't think, with the way we're, we've chosen here. So I, I really want this separated, at least in our mind, at least, or be clear, that it has to, that if we're going to have TruMark and maybe RSVP be the only one, they've got to be really substantial, and deliver both. And I, I just don't want to be driven to have to do both at once, because we don't have the set of competitors here that's going to make this a real competition.
Can I, Vice Mayor?
We have three. Let's just bring three forward, to include, to include the two combos with the two substantive hotel developers, and TruMark too. And if TruMark fills that blind spot need, or...
You tripped where I was going.
You know...
That's, that's what I wanted to do.
I just think two's too short a cut, because we have no fallback.
Right. So here's the problem, and we've got to address this, and then it becomes with the respondents, is that going forward is a big effort. with the respondents, is that going forward is a big effort, substantial commitment, and to the extent you choose too many, you've made it a problem. So, I think this is something we have to be explicit on. My desire is, if we, and don't forget, that the people who built, bid the combo said if they don't get the residential, they don't get the hotel. So, it's not separated, so we're kinda, we're kinda messed up, in, in my belief. So, we can go to three. I believe, though, that that, and, 'cause I've explored that option with staff, and it's not advisable. So, let's have, we should, we gotta figure this out, because I'm, I'm afraid we're gonna make a mistake.
Well, yes, one of the things that we're pretty much agreed to up here is that we're not going to settle. I think that was very clear in our discussions last night. We're not going to settle for anything less, uh, than very high quality throughout the entire project, both sides of it.
Here's my point. Yeah, but my point is this, if we say we are absolutely committed to having to deliver both simultaneously, and we've got a not equal competition here, we've kinda got an answer. We've just gotta be careful.
Agreed.
Can I add to that? I agree with everything that you just said, and, and I think that, that a, a lot of it will be fleshed out in the next round. Um, I, I think that we're being very clear to both teams that appear to be in the lead, um, and, and I, I use the team's word lightly, because TruMark and RSVP approach separately, but I, I think that if they don't address these concerns in the next round, then, you know, there's, there's nothing saying that we have to choose either team, both.
No, I, I know, so, we're not being clear. We are not being clear. I mean, I want real clarity on, are we driven to, to, to want both simultaneously, and anything less means no, because that changes the landscape of the competition. So, I want, I'm saying, I don't need to do 'em both at the same time, and I'm willing to wait on the hotel. And I've heard one council member here say just the opposite, and I haven't heard the three of you express an opinion, so, we're not clear yet.
So, to, to add to that chance of clarity, I agree with you, that I am willing to wait on the hotel. Um, but a, at this point, I would like to see if we are pleasantly surprised in the next round, uh, with what the applicants can, can bring forward.
True, but we have to make this decision, because what's on the table now is, do we go to three or two? And whether we go to three or two depends on being clear on whether we can separate these or not.
Yeah, and I, I agree, I think we can separate them.
I contemplated going to three all night last night, and all day today, and I'm not comfortable going to three, giving third spot to somebody who only got one vote. Um, I don't think that's fair with the other two groups, and, um, I don't think we have to decide tonight if we are going to do them together or not. That's a decision when we see the proposals that we, let me finish, the proposals that we get back. And, um, but if you could see all the cringes out there when you said that the hotel can wait, then I think, over the last six months, the number one thing we have heard from the folks in the room is, "The hotel cannot wait." Um, it doesn't mean we can't get it right, and that we need to certainly do it correctly, but I, I think we really need to consider that the hotel is a huge priority for our businesses, for the labs, for the downtown. Housing's a very important, too, but, um, we cannot, I don't, I, you know, like I said, I, I'm not deciding today. Today, we're deciding who we're gonna get, go to bed, who we're, who we're considering partnering with, and that's it. Sorry, I'm gonna change what I'm gonna say, and we're not, but...
Ask the city manager.
City attorney, stop me. Um, but, we don't have to say for sure that we're gonna stay in congruence, but I think that we've got two very strong hotel, we have two hotel strong projects, we have two strong residential projects. Five of us picked the residential project, four picked the other one, three picked the hotel, and four picked the other hotel. I think, we have a council majority on each of those decisions, and so, in my opinion, that's where we should head forward to. Given that, they gotta bring us something really cool for us to be able to understand it. And there's one other piece I, I missed in our, in my directions to all finalists earlier. Um, I'm sure you guys have caught on to the fact that there's this group of people called the Ad-Hot Group, and they are committed to this town and our downtown, a lot of artists, a lot of very passionate people. I would assume that in your community conversation, that you, you discuss a lot of things with them as well, because they are incredibly passionate about our downtown.
Okay, so, we have, pardon me? Yeah. Uh, I also believe the hotel is a very important component of the downtown. This is something that, I agree with the, the Vice Mayor, that whenever I've talked to anybody, that's the first thing they talk about, is, "We need a hotel in the downtown." Um, let me, and, and, so, in that case, if you're talking about hotel in the downtown, that's got five votes. Uh, let me just run a question to staff. Uh, yeah, we were hoping to come out of this with two. Uh, how difficult, it's fifty percent more, uh, but, uh, and you have a better sense of, of what the capacity for staff would be at this point?
Oh, I wouldn't do this based on staff's capacity. Um, the, the concept between two and three, um, and there was, you know, spirited internal debate at the staff level there, was to try and cut the list short enough so that your finalists really believed bluntly that it was worth spending a noticeable amount of resources on. Um, I tell you, you're one of twenty-two, you know, that's a different level of effort. I mean, everybody has a lot on their plate, and, and, you know, th- this is all at-risk, you know, investment by our, by our proposed partners at this particular point. There's no magic between two and three. Um, your staff recommended two, after sort of doing the evaluation. Um, you know, you've heard points on both sides of that, um, concept there. Uh, you know, the, the downside is, you know, each of your partners knows that, that they're, you know, one of three instead of one of two. Um, but, you know, you, you have a unique situation here. Um, you know, I'd love to tell you that they'll work, uh, exactly as hard with three as two, um, on that particular point. Um, and so, uh, the, the recommendation was two. Um, it's, it's not gonna basically, you know, you're not gonna hurt our feelings as staff, or you're not going to tax our resources, uh, dramatically differently on a staff level on that. Um, if ultimately, the majority of you conclude that you wanna continue the conversation in more detail with three, that you think that's a bluntly a good use of your partner's resources, and a good use of the community's resources and your time, um, that's something that, that your staff will make sure happens.
As I said, what I've heard over and over again is the importance of a hotel, and, I think that that's, uh, I was, I think that we made it very clear that, uh, the city believes that we are one of the top five hottest real estate markets in the country, uh, that we have, uh, I've talked to some of the hoteliers around here, uh, and there are hotels here that are getting more than Washington DC rates. Uh, so, I think that, that we're worth it. I honestly do. Uh, and I think that, that we're, we're better than a residence in. Uh, and I'd like to see the developers come in with, with what, with the best product. And I agree with the, the Vice Mayor, that this is something that, that we've talked about for years, and I've heard over and over again that we need a hotel. Uh, I actually, the, the, uh, Ms. Shuler that spoke earlier, I actually didn't think that anybody knew about that exercise at the laboratory, uh, but, uh, yeah, they, they're, I don't think anybody stayed here in Livermore, because we just didn't have the facilities here. So, we do need that, and I, uh, I think that if, I'd like to see that the best project people can bring into Livermore, because Livermore deserves it. We're worth it, uh, and I think that anybody that, uh, that, uh, is worthy of Livermore is willing to work for it. So, I wanna see the best product that, that can be brought to this community, because we really are the best. So, I would, I would support going for the three.
Can I ask one more question?
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
You, you, you went through your allotment.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so, hypothetically, if we do select, 'cause my, my, my issue is, again, what we've discussed, are we letting the hotel, or is the hotel driving the residential? Are we gonna make compromises on the rent, residential, because we like the hotel, or vice versa?
No.
No?
I'm not gonna compromise.
Okay, so, if we do like a particular residential, one over another, are we now downgrading that because there's no hotel attached, just right out the gate tonight? Are we saying that, because you have no, you know, we, we, we could really like this residential project, we think it's, it's at this point, which I still think is a little too early, but, uh, it's leaps and bounds above the other projects, um, but you don't have a hotel, then we are compromising residential for the potential of a hotel. And I, just, the, the follow-up question in asking the city manager is, hypothetically, if we went out for another, what would it do if we went out for another RFP for hotel at this point? If we say that we don't like any of the hotel proposals, uh, we're not enthusiastic about it, but we're, we're great with the residential. And unfortunately, it, it looks like one of the residential projects, if we don't accept the hotel, they're, they're, they're tied. So, I'm, I'm, I'm still trying to, you know, what, what are the ramifications, in a nutshell, in under thirty seconds, uh, would that, would that take?
Your staff wouldn't recommend you interrupt your existing process to go out for another process. Um, let's see, I gotta use nice words. Um, that wouldn't be a good idea. Um, basically, yeah, it, it would give, it would give the sense to the marketplace that you're not serious about entertaining a process. If your staff bluntly, and, you know, the community, and you all had concluded that you had no viable options that you wanted to have any conversations with, that's completely fair, and you're completely within your legal rights. I, I don't wanna, you are within your legal rights to do what you suggested, I don't wanna dissuade you from that. We do not recommend that at this point. Um, if you ultimately get to a place where you are enamored, you know, clearly enamored with a particular residential mixed-use project, and a hotel ultimately isn't part of that, you have that decision at that point, you know, as some of the council members sort of said, is, "I'm willing to sort of move forward with one part of this and not another." You're ultimately in control of that. Um, but I would not interrupt your current process. Uh, your staff believes you have viable options on both sides of the house. I, I think your discussion, you know, really now needs to sort of be, is, how many partners do you wish to invite back to the next round? Um, and you've heard, you know, the, the downside is, uh, being one of two is one level of competition, being one of three is a different level of competition. All of your partners out there are extremely good at what they do, they're very busy out there in the marketplace, they're among the best out there. You want them to be as excited about us as we are about them, um, and so, at the same time, I think you've got very valid reasons for your discussion of three.
Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
If it helps my peers, I, I'm not, while I'm strong about leveraging both for obvious market reasons, maybe not obvious. In answer to Councilmember Werner, and I appreciate, you know, the support in trying to get the yes on this, on hotel options, if a combo comes back with, to the community, as well as us and the planning commission, with, not planning commission, the, the staff level input in the next step, a really unpalatable residential proposal and a great hotel, I would assume at that point, we'd have the power as a council to split possibly and say, uh, "You know, the combo just didn't work out, we don't have the leverage, let's, let's take the Alpha Hotel proposal and the Baker, uh, residential proposal." And I think it's up to the, the residential applicant who got high marks, uh, to, to either come ahead, it's their business decision to come ahead without a hotel or with a hotel. That's, that, that is up to their business decision. I just didn't wanna narrow us tonight to only one hotel option and faceplant when we have another hotel packageer there in T2, who knows an awful lot also about the, the industry, and we've yet to really deeply mine what they know also. That was, if you might, hearing ourselves talk, that's more my core value, is to keep them at play longer.
Yeah, and that's where I was coming from, and, and staff can tell you, that's where I was at, and was saying, "Hey, is this really a problem?" Because, as I said in my remarks, I, I had one that I really loved the design, and then the other two were there, the combos. Now, don't forget, the other dynamic here is, when asked, the respondent said if they don't get the retail, the hotel, you know, the West Side, they're not gonna do the hotel, right? So, they're not, we don't, they're, we don't get a hotel-only option, we don't get the mix and match, 'cause we've been told that's not the way it works. It's all or nothing. The, what I think what Councilmember Spodowski was trying to get at is to kinda split this, and let's, let's, let's have some ability to mix and match. We have the ability now to say, "That's what we're gonna do," or not, and then, or, but, I mean, we just gotta get, as I say, we really need to clarify this. I'm okay with the three, assuming the three are okay with that, and that we face the decision when we're faced with the reality of the proposals. And I understand the need for a hotel, you know, the desire for a hotel, but getting the wrong one there is just gonna be a disaster. It really will, and there's nothing that says we wanna do, there's nothing that important about it, and we talk about the needs of the lab. Well, the lab, I, I came here forty years ago to work at the lab, it's still here, and that hotel hasn't been there, so, this is not that important in the scheme of things. And we, and besides, there's plenty of hotels on the freeway, and if we're gonna put a freeway-type hotel downtown, no, in my, my mind. So, it's gotta be the right hotel. I heard very clearly that from the market targets, target markets that people were thinking about from these hotel options was really clearly the business traveler, and it's the, it's what you get on a, on the freeway, or maybe gussied up a little bit. So, I'm, I just don't wanna compromise, 'cause this is, we're not gonna level that hotel in a few years and say, "Hey, well, let's try again," right? So, it is extremely important that that be done right, but the other part of the project is the real driver. That's where the space is for the open market, for the walkability, for the arts, all of those things. That's gotta be done right. And to say, "We're so desperate for a hotel, I, I just can't go there." I mean, everybody wants one, I want one, but I don't want the wrong one.
Good. So, my feeling is if we go for the three, they're gonna come out with the best that they can. And then, at, at that point, they said that that's not an option to split, well, it's not an option to split.
If I can be clear, I think what I heard was, they don't have to do the hotel, 'cause it's kinda like, you know, there wasn't that much enthusiasm for it. So, I think that if they, if we said we would decline on the hotel at this moment, they'd still be in the running for the residential. But it's the other way around we can't have, and that's why I'm pushing this issue.
Okay. So, where does that leave us?
Honorable Mayor, at this point, we'd recommend that someone put a motion on the table, um, about who you're inviting back. I would, I'm moving invite the three back that are, we've been discussing.
So, plus RSVP.
So, let's, so let's be clear about who we're discussing here. So, so, we would invite back on the hotel side, um, we would invite back RSVP, we would invite back on the hotel side, the half of the Lennar team, the Compass Project, and then the third hotel that would be invited back is T2 Hospitality. Is that correct, as far as the clarity of your motion? And at the same time, on the residential mixed-use side, we would invite TruMark, Summer Hill Homes, and Lennar. Okay, so, there's a motion on the table to move those three. Is there a second?
I would second that. Uh, any discussion with the motion?
Clarification?
Yes.
It's, it's a variation of what we spent X minutes talking about, to, to, to keep RSVP in. I think if we're gonna keep 'em in, the, the message needs to be, they're, they're welcome to continue as a standalone applicant. I don't want them to be forced into square peg, round hole, 'cause if they don't like the fit with TruMark or vice versa, we don't know what we don't know, and I don't want this to sound like we're telling RSVP to go partner with something.
Exactly, and that's what I was trying to get, that was my point initially. That's exactly it.
We did, and along those lines, we could, you know, not like the, again, not like the hotel, so, in a sense, they are, they are independent, even though they're saying we're a partner, you're, you know, now it's okay, if we don't like one aspect or the other, then if you're a partner, then both are out. If they said, "Okay, well, you know, we like the hotel, but we don't like your residential," that's, that's then up to the applicant. So, uh, you know, it's kind of, we're, we're more discussing two or three than, you know, who's partner, that's, that's up to them. I mean, and, and again, we could say that we do like your residential, we don't like your hotel, and then it's their decision whether or not to move forward, so.
I think it's important for the public to understand, and we didn't quite voice it this way, the monkey wrench we were thrown, you know, we've heard from other studies over a period of time, and there's a reason there isn't a downtown hotel today in Livermore. The market... The market doesn't want to build it. There'd be one. So, we did this RFP process, and guess what? We only got one independent hotel proposal from, from a local subregional operator. And, and we got two large companies bringing in hotel packagers to try, to try to bring something more to the table. And that's generated this struggle, is we don't have turnkey hotel developers or packagers lining up six-deep for downtown Livermore. It's as weird as that is to say, we know our demographic, we've all heard our hotel operators talk to us individually about their thriving weekend business and the thriving weddings business, but somehow, it's still not fully penetrating the applicant pool for this size city.
Right, and, and, and so, what we're trying to do is force something, and I wanted to keep us from forcing something. And we've got to acknowledge reality here, and, and look at it. And, and it just may not be that the time is right. I mean, it just, it could be, and we can't, otherwise, what we're really saying is, we want you to give us some image that we have. We know that your market study says it, it doesn't pencil, but therefore, you know, cross-subsidized from one part to the other, and I think that would be a mistake.
For the, for Turner?
Since there's multiple things on the table, but only really truly, we're just voting between two or three, I just want to clarify, I am going to vote no. And it has nothing to do with, with my confidence in, in the people. I, I'm very happy with two, and I think that the top two, who got the majority of the votes, can bring us what we want. I'm confident that that can happen. I'm supportive of my peers wanting that third, but I also realize how difficult and how much money each of these companies is going to spend on these proposals. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to be one of three instead of one of two. And I'm happy to see what each of the three companies brings us, but I can't support voting for a, a company to come back who only got one vote from this council. And, but I, I support and respect your decisions to do so. So, I just wanted to explain my vote in advance.
In my opinion, I think we want the best that we can possibly get, what, what we deserve, and I think if it takes a little bit more effort, I think it's going to be worth it. But we're not going to settle.
I, I think also, I appreciate your comment. It predisposes that, quote, "Number three will put the money up." Number three could have a business meeting two days from now and say, we're out. I mean, we're not telling them they have to continue. We're not telling them they have to sink six figures into a proposal either, nor are we telling Dana Woodmore, nor are we telling Teak Two, nor are we telling RSVP. There, there's still some risk here that they have to make the cost-benefit calculation on whether or not to proceed.
Okay, any further discussion with the motion?
I'd like to say that I, I agree with Councilmember Turner's comments, and that would echo in my, my vote.
Okay, so this is going to be a, a resounding punt.
So, can I, certainly. What I've heard is enough flexibility in the thinking. I mean, if I, you know, being assured that we're not going to compromise, that we're going to face reality with respect to the hotel, I, and I, I've, I've heard enough movement here in the thinking that I'm okay with two.
Which two?
Well, the, the two that we ha, I mean, the, you know, the...
Please clear the board.
To drop Summerhill from the, from the list. I'm okay with that, right? Because we, and then we come back to where we were. I was just trying to respond. Pardon?
I'm sorry, I, I should...
Okay.
I'm, I'm starting to talk, I'm just...
Okay, you go ahead. So, I'm, I'm...
What I'm saying is, I've heard enough flexibility here that we're, we're not going to compromise. That's what I was worried about. So, I've, I've heard we're not going to be driven to compromise on the hotel, and we're not going to have that drive the project. And I'm hearing that from the fellow council members, so I'm okay with what the vote tally says at this point then. So, I'll withdraw my motion.
Then I'll make a second motion. I move that we invite back RSVP Investments, Lennar, and Trumark.
Including their hotel partner, Compass, correct?
RSVP Investments, Lennar, Compass Project, and Trumark Homes.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion.
Staff, since T2 was a respondent with Summerhill, what if T2 knocked on the door tomorrow and said, we want to submit independently?
Well, your staff won't be until noon tomorrow.
And, and can wait till Friday noon to decide. What, what if another, well, let's think this through, what if another hotel operator hears this and knocks on somebody's door and says they didn't go through any of this process, but hey, we're Acme Hotel, we want to be somebody's partner?
We would recommend, we would continue to recommend that you follow and finish the process that you started. And if you do not find a partner in that process, you do not have to pick someone you don't like. That's very clear in all the documents. We would not, at this point, recommend entertaining additional proposals, however enticing, simply because I think we ultimately want to give people who do business with the some competence that there is some process, and they have a chance of getting to the end of it. If ultimately, you don't, don't find what you want, then I would recommend that we do a variety of things to try and figure out, is there a way to get what we want out there in the marketplace?
Councilor Turner?
City Manager Roberts, do you need a spa?
I just had to, sorry.
I think it's more of a rehab at this point than a spa.
Cocktail probably would be better.
Wine. Wine, wine would do it, yes.
Okay, so, doughnut wheel? And these are the people that, that are driving the taste in Livermore, okay.
It's better than beer, well, I guess...
Wine and doughnut wheel, okay, so, either or.
Have you not had wine in a day?
No, I have not. Okay, so, we have a motion on the table for RSVP Investments, Lennar, Compass, and Trumark. If it's moved and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Suppose at this point I have to call the question, don't I? Let me just think about this.
Well, you, you can discuss it.
Yeah, well, I, at this point, I'm just thinking about it. So... Somebody's clearing the... Pardon me?
I have a coin.
No, no, we're not doing that. No, so, so in effect, what we're doing here is, if this does go ahead, if this motion does pass, in fact, what we're doing is we're, we're forcing RSVP to combine with Trumark, whether or not, as the council, as Vice Mayor pointed out, that's a square peg in a round hole.
No, we're not.
I heard is that, I heard enough movement to say we're not forcing that. We're not going to compromise on the hotels.
No, we're not, we're not going to compromise, but...
But we're still cutting three to two.
Right.
Which was the whole intent of RSVP, our whole RSVP process.
Okay, so, we've got, the motion on the table is RSVP Investments, Lennar, Compass Project, and Trumark Homes. So, with that case, I will call the question, all in favor of the motion, see if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed for the hotel.
Okay. For the hotel?
Just giving my reason.
Okay, okay.
I want, I want Lennar to understand how much I liked their overall package, but I think with three small hotel proposals, cutting from three to two is, is shortening our options dramatically at the very beginning of the real process.
Okay. So, the motion passes four to one? Has staff gotten sufficient direction?
For the record, we'll read into the record that the motion passed four-one with Vice Mayor Gary opposing.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, we believe that staff has heard your comments this evening, your concerns, the issues that you want us to work on, and we will sit down with your finalists and work to bring back proposals for your further consideration. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, so, moving on to, congratulations to the folks, and look forward to you coming back with, with your best. Okay, moving on to 6.03, do we have any federal or state legislation?
No.
Okay, moving on to manager, City Council Committee reports and matters initiated.
Shall we do this as quickly as possible?
Yes, we shall.
Okay. January 27th, I attended the Livermore Amateur Valley Water Management Agency special meeting, nothing to report. On the first of this month, I attended the LAFTA Board to discuss the draft changes to the COA. We had quite the discussion, and we're going to discuss that at the next meeting before going out to the public, refine it a little bit. On the second, I attended the Joint Board of Governors reception for the Lab, both Livermore and Los Alamos. On the third, I attended the East Bay Community Energy Meeting, and I, I, I think it is important to note that we are in the process of finalizing the consultant report, and we are looking at starting the public information process with a timeline of forming the JPA around September, and then possibly having a JPA meeting in October. If everything goes through, we'll have to come back to the council, we'll have to vote on whether or not to join that effort. Much more information to come, but I wanted to mention that quickly. And then, on the fourth, I attended the Lab reception at the library to celebrate Science and Engineering Month.
Okay, very good. Councilor Turner?
On the first, I attended the same meeting at the LAFTA, where we're looking at redesigning LAFTA and looking at the routes. Very, very excited for the Rapid, that I fondly call the not-so, that someday, I'll be able to actually fondly call it the Rapid, and really looking at going from the Transit Center to the College to BART, and that's it, and starting an exploration, hopefully, and to look at the parking lot by the Outlet Mall, that used to be an Outlet Mall, or was supposed to be an Outlet Mall, but is not much of one, and making that potentially a park-and-ride shuttle from the Greenville area to BART directly. And so, very excited about that potential opportunity to get cars off the freeway, and that's all I have to report.
Councilor Turner?
No, you know, meetings to report, but I do have one thing on the matters initiated, and that's with respect to the trees, because I've got people asking me, what are we going to, what's happening here? And I, the chainsaws were out in force today on my block, and just so that we could inform people as to what's the city's plan, I, I think it's going to be a wait and see, but if we just get some information out there, how we're dealing with this, and, and in two forms. I mean, I see a lot of trees that look like they're toast. What are we going to do? And I think we had a, in the open forum part yesterday, someone talked about, we, we had some trees left in the sidewalks. So, what, just some kind of report back of what our plan is here, and a replacement at all, not, maybe not a replacement, kind of, just what's the plan?
Vice Mayor? Okay, on 28th of January, I attended the ACTC Board meeting, and we talked about the legislative update, and also went over the update on the 580s express lanes. We had, on the third, I attended the LCAC, Livermore Cultural Arts. On February 4th, talked to, we had an IGATE Board of Directors meeting, where we reorganized the board and reorganized the organization of the, of the, the group. On the fifth, I attended the Cal LaFco meeting down in Irvine, and yesterday, I attended the Alameda County Transportation Commission I 580s express lane meeting, committee meeting, which, which I chair, and also the Planning Policy and Ledge Committee, where we voted on the, the final goods and freight movement. And with that regard, there was someone yesterday that suggested I should resign from the ACTC. And what was remarkable is, he stood up here and waived $125 and said that was what everybody, every man, woman, and child in Livermore had paid, was paying because of Measure BB. And he said that we, we had rejected it. Well, the problem is, is if every man, woman, and child was paying that, $125, if you're talking about one-half of 1%, in order to pay 125 bucks, that's $25,000. Is, you know, the $125 is one-half of 1% of 25,000, which means that the sales tax in Alameda County is 9.5%, which means that every man, woman, and child would have to spend $475,000 a year on taxable items. So, I don't think that's the case. So, I think he may have been off a, a few decimal places on that. But the fact of the matter is, on the vote that he was speaking of, which was the Wendell Rosen, whether we had a renewed, the no-bid contract, there are 22 representatives on ACTC. One person voted against renewing the contract for Wendell Rosen. So, I'm not quite sure why this gentleman is coming after the city of Livermore, when there was only one person that voted against that, and every other representative on ACTC voted to renew the contract. So, I'm just curious why, why they're coming after Livermore. I've checked with several attorneys, they all say that there's no problem. I have one gentleman who is yelling from the podium that, that there is a problem. So, I listen to the attorneys that I trust, and that we pay to represent us. So, I will not resign from ACTC. My, and I, the citizens of Livermore have given me the, the right and the authority to appoint the people to the committees where I believe they can best serve, and I have appointed myself to ACTC, and I shall stay there. So, with that, there being no, for the Business Committee of the Council, let's move to, I'll adjourn this to the regular meeting on February 22nd.